All right, welcome. We're gonna go ahead and call our meeting to order now. And we're gonna go ahead and do the Pledge of Allegiance. Go ahead and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, Ms. Abilene Grande, please.
Your right hand over your heart. Let us begin.
Awesome, thank you so much. Moving on to 1.3 approval of the agenda, is there any items to be pulled?
Board President, Ms. Sevales, I'd like to pull 7.3 Citizens Oversight Committee report.
Alrighty, we're gonna go ahead and pull 7.3. Can I get a motion on the remaining?
Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
Move by Dr. Wyatt, second by Mrs. Alexander, vote please. Ms. Rosales?
Aye, I don't see it up.
Motion passed. We're going to go ahead and go to 2.0 Special Presentation/Recognitions, 2.1 Resolution in Support of Amending SB 316 High School Voter Registration. And I will go ahead and ask Ms. Medina if she will go ahead and read that for us.
Since my thing is refreshing, for some reason I'm not able to see it, I will read it off of this computer. Thank you, President Sevales. Whereas a healthy democracy depends on informed and active participation by its citizens, beginning with the civic engagement and civic education and engagement of young people. And where existing law declares that two full weeks of April and September as high school voter education weeks, encouraging voter registration activities and civic awareness on high school campuses across the state. Whereas Senate Bill 316 introduced by Senator Reyes requires, beginning in 2026 and 27 school year, that school districts, county offices of education, state special schools, and charter schools ensure that all students receive information on how to pre-register to vote and register to vote at least once before completing 11th grade. And whereas San Bernardino, ESP 316, further ensures access to paper voter registration cards upon request by a pupil or pupil's parent or guardian, including referrals to the Secretary of State's website. And whereas the governing board of school districts shall ensure that all information shared with parents, guardians, and pupils under this section is handled according to applicable state and federal pupil privacy laws and regulations. And whereas this legislation authorizes schools to partner with qualified nonprofit organizations experienced in nonpartisan youth civic engagement to assist in implementing these requirements. And whereas the bill acknowledges potential new responsibilities for local educational agencies and provides for state reimbursement of associated costs, should the commission on state mandates determine that a state mandate exists, therefore be resolved that the Board of Education hereby supports Senate Bill 316 Reyes as a proactive measure to increase civic participation, voter education, and long-term democratic engagement among California's youth. And further be resolved, the Board of Education commits to preparing for the possible implementation of SB 316 in the 2026-27 school year by reviewing current civic education practices, ensuring access to voter registration resources, and identifying potential nonprofit partners to support nonpartisan civic engagement programs.
Before we, sorry, before I entertain a motion, I do have a couple comments on this item. So I will go ahead and call up first Mr. Achilles Warcry Sevala. And once again, congratulations, Mr. Achilles, for your graduation and salutatorian.
Oh shit, sorry. Thank you. I'll begin now. So hello and good evening, Superintendent and Board members. My name is Achilles Warcry Sevala, and I am a recent graduate from San Gregorio High School and a student organizer with ICUC. SB 316 is a proposed law concerning high school student involvement in voter registration. It would authorize the administrator of a public or private high school to appoint enrolled students to coordinate and assist with voter registration efforts at their schools. I believe that tonight's approval of the resolution supporting SB 316 would be a significant step toward engaging youth, our young people, more deeply in our current democracy. By supporting high school students to take an active role in voter registration efforts on their campus. This bill makes the process of becoming a voter more accessible, familiar, and engaging to the youth. It helps raise the percentage of youth voter engagement in elections by removing barriers and building confidence in the voting process before students even graduate. It is more than just filling out forms. This gives young people a chance to find their own voice, speak up about what matters to them, and take part in shaping the world they want to live in. When students see their role in civic life early on, they're more likely to stay involved and vote consistently as adults. This bill also encourages leadership, responsibility, and awareness among teens. Skills that stretch far beyond voting. It shows students that their voice matters now, not just in the future, and that they don't have to wait to start making a difference. SB 316 isn't just about getting names on voter rolls. It's about creating lifelong habits of civic engagement and giving the next generation the tools they need to carve their own path and lead their communities forward with confidence and purpose. Thank you, Board, for giving me a few minutes of your time, and thank you for your support of a youth-led future, and thank you again.
Thank you so much, and once again, congratulations. Up next, we have Mr. John Haddel or Addle?
Hello?
How do you, yes, how do you pronounce your last name?
It's Addle.
Addle.
It's okay either way. Hello, good evening, Board members. My name is John Harrow. I'm currently a student attending SBDC and a student organizer with ICUC. I'm here today to speak in support of SB 316 because of its critical impact it will have on students in SB UCD district. I graduated from Aurora Valley High School in 2024. Oh, sorry. I graduated, well, okay, to start a little, my name is John, but I graduated from Aurora Valley High School in 2024. While attending, I gratefully discovered the club ICUC and foreigner community, right, from their community, while simultaneously finding help to become a political voice in my community. As a result, I've had the opportunity to educate and personally help my peers and family vote in the last previous election. But SB 316 represents an important step forward in voter engagement by educating pre-voters about their rights and voting information. It is crucial for communities to use civil engagement in order for their voices to be heard. Approving this resolution in support of SB 316 would ensure that our district can implement these necessary changes directly benefiting students and our communities. Supporting for SB 316 today will support a more educated society tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you so much, John, you did an amazing job, just so you know. Up next, we have Ozzy Dolan?
Hello, good morning, Board members and superintendents. My name is Ozzy Dolan, I will be a senior this coming school year at Pacific High School, and I just came here to voice my support for SB 316. With my work with ICUC, I've noticed that there has been a low turnout for the younger generation, people under 25, in city, state, and national elections. I work closely with the voter engagement part of ICUC, so I participate in phone banks and notice that a majority of people, registered voters, are people over the age of 60 or even close to 80 or 90 when I do them. So by implementing SB 316 and not mandating, but allowing schools to pre-register students the ages of 17 and 16 during high school, it will raise the turnout for the younger generation and the youth during city, state, and national elections. I believe this bill will create a big change in our community, in the nation, and in any election following if this bill were to pass. So I'd just like to say thank you. That's it.
Well, thank you so much for coming and speaking on this item. Up next, we have Ms. Rocío Ruiz Chen?
Good evening, Superintendent Ariano, Board President Sevales, and Board members and cabinet. My name is Rocío Ruiz Chen, and I am the current Associate Director with ICUC. And I'm also an alumni from San Gregorio High School, class of 2009, and also currently a parent to two students, incoming first grader and third grader at Virtual Academy. And so really happy to be here with you all tonight and with some of our awesome students that we work very closely with in ICUC. And I just wanted to share a little bit about why this bill is so important to us and why it's so important to us to have all of y'all's support with the resolution that you all have in front of you. Just to give a little backstory, history on this bill. This bill actually was inspired because of the work that our students, our leaders within ICUC, have been doing here in this district for over a decade now. For many years, our students have been going into their high school campuses, working with administration and working with their teachers to make sure that they're bringing in voter education into their classrooms and letting their peers know that they can pre-register to vote as soon as they turn 16. And this bill, SB 316, really comes from that work that students have been doing. The idea for this bill really was born from our student leaders, working together with Senator Eloise Gomez Reyes and crafting the language. And it's now going through the legislative process. Just recently, it got passed in the Senate, and so now it will be up in the Assembly Education Committee on July 2nd. So it's definitely making its way, hopefully soon, we'll be seeing it get to Governor Newsom's desk. And so having the support of you all, and hopefully, right, the idea and the hope is that we get as much support for this bill as possible throughout the state. We're really make sure that we're elevating the importance of our youth voice and how folks in our community here, right in San Bernardino, are really leading the way and making sure that our youth and our students are really empowered and well-educated to make sure that their voices are heard and that they become lifelong participants in their communities and engaged, right, and are not just, you know, our country selections, but locally, right, we know how important that is. So just want to thank each and every one of you. For a long time, we have gotten a lot of support from many of you all to continue to do this work. And so we just wanted to come here tonight, really show our appreciation for all of the support that we've received and really wanting to continue to see that collaboration continue to move forward. So thank you so much, and really looking forward to the approval of tonight's resolution. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Abigail, Ms. Rosales Medina, sorry.
I just want to say, you know, for many years, ICUC youth has connected with myself, even before being a board member, I worked with Cope and it was collaboration with ICUC. And they've always been able to organize youth in the way of understanding civic engagement, understanding voter engagement, all of that. And so it's been years, it's been, you know, the growth of their program and the way they've been doing things. And the fact that this bill is coming from San Bernardino youth, from our district youth, is an accomplishment to showing what we've been able to accomplish so far. And so I do want to say a statement, so I want to take a moment to speak on why it is so important to uplift and support SB 316. This bill reflects the values we live out every day in San Bernardino City Unified. Our students, particularly those leading through ICUC, are already showing us what real civic engagement looks like. It also reinforces what we in this district are already committed to empowering youth, especially from communities too often left out of these systems. Supporting this bill means recognizing the power our students already have and making sure it's honored statewide. Thank you.
Thank you. And then I'll go ahead and entertain a motion at this time.
So move.
Second. Move by Dr. Wyatt, second by Ms. Medina, vote please. Mr. Santos?
Aye.
Motion carries, 2.0, I'm sorry, 2.2 Resolution in Support of Amending AB 1390. I'll ask Ms. Alexander to please read it for us.
Thank you, Madam President. Whereas California Assembly Bill 1390 addresses governance and compensation practices for county boards of education and governing boards of school districts, and whereas existing law authorized the members of city or county boards of education or the governing board of school districts to receive compensation not to exceed a specified amount between $60 to $1,500 per month, based on the average daily attendance for the prior school year in a jurisdiction of the governing board as provided. And whereas proposed amendments to AB-1390 introduced by Assembly Member Salash would revise and recast provisions related to the compensation of members of the city or county boards of education and the governing boards of school districts by increasing the authorized compensation to instead not to exceed a specified amount between $300 to $7,500 per month, based on the average daily attendance for the prior school year in a jurisdiction of the governing board for the prior school year provided as, and whereas in a school district in which the average daily attendance to the prior school year was 60,000 or less, but more than 25,000, each regular member of the city board of education or governing board of the school district who attends all meetings held may receive as compensation for their regular member services a sum not to exceed $3,750 in any month. And whereas the governing board of the San Bernardino City Unified School District recognizes the importance of adequate compensation to attract and maintain qualified board members committed to effective school governance and student success, and therefore be resolved, the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District, number one, supports the proposed amendments to the California Assembly Bill 1390 between the years of 2025 to 2026 concerning public school governance and board members' compensation. Number two, encourages the California State Legislature to adopt amendments that provide clear, equitable, and sustainable compensation frameworks for school board members across all district sizes. Number three, urges policymakers to consider the varied responsibilities of governing board members and the necessity of appropriate compensation to ensure continued community leadership and oversight in public education. And number four, requests ongoing collaboration between the school districts, legislators, and stakeholders to refine compensation policies that support effective governance and promote student achievement. So move.
Second. Move by Mrs. Alexander, second by Ms. Medina. Vote please. Ms. Grande? Motion passed. 3.0 Public Comments, 3.1 Receive Public Comments. This is the only time the public will have an opportunity to address the board on items not on the agenda and within their subject matter jurisdiction, such as district policies, procedures, programs, services, or fiscal matters. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person, six or more people who wish to speak on a topic will be provided no more than 30 minutes total. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because these comments are made at a public meeting. We will call up first Mr. Terry Boykins. Good to see you.
Thank you, Madam Board President. Terry Boykins, Project Finding Chance Executive Director. Excited to be, hi, Dr. Wyatt, how you doing? Excited to be back here, I just came in from Las Vegas where your alumni is just mixing it up for the national championship up there. Just something about the Dino, when it leaves town, just starts biting people. And so it's kind of exciting. But I tell you, the thing I wanted to share with you, I had a chance while I was in Vegas to be on an informational meeting with the parents of San Bernardino City Unified School District regarding our summer enrichment program. So we had about 35, 38 parents and caregivers being briefed on what our plans are from July 1st through the 25th. 150 students have enrolled in that program for this year, which is absolutely phenomenal. And we are very committed, I know Superintendent Ariano and Dr. Rodriguez, we said last year, at the beginning of the school year, we wanted you all to hold us accountable. And that's what we wanted to do in this community. Summertime, you all put in the work throughout the year, and sometimes the community has to pick up that slack during the summer when those young people are vulnerable, a lot of things happen in these streets, a lot of things happen in these homes. And Project Finding Chance wanted to basically be in the cut to fulfill our obligations. And so it was exciting to listen to the parents, the excitement, the enthusiasm. But more importantly, on the 1st of July, we get a chance to have 150 youth from San Bernardino City Unified School District walk into Ruben Campus Community Center. And boy, that we've got a program prepared for them. I think if you get a chance to come through, everything from etiquette classes to, of course, boxing fitness, STEM programs, mental health awareness, art, literary arts, it's gonna be pretty exciting. So we invite you to come through and just really see what community partnerships, you know, look like during the summer. So once again, July 1st, take a break on the 4th of July, and then we're back all the way until the 25th, and then we start preparing to help these young people transition with the right mindset, the "I am a champion" mindset for the school year. And that's that. But I also want you all to become aware, some of you have probably heard in social media, your alumni, terrible Terry Washington, is the new WBF champion of the world. And so that's exciting. You all have been a very big part, I know when we were talking recently in terms of Terry, you know, you can't make these things up in terms of how an educator plays a role in a child's life. Terry Washington was that young man that didn't want to go to class, didn't want to go to school, you know, he's doing all kinds of things. But the amount of promotion he does about the importance of education in his role is absolutely phenomenal. He's on a whole different trajectory right now. He has defeated some of the top boxers in the world. And he's motivated, I know why he's motivated. But Terry is still Terry. He's just that kid from the Dino, and you know, he's got the grit in him. But he has learned how to respect and appreciate and understand what it means to read professional contracts that affects his pocketbook and understand where the zeros are. It's good to see a young man like that move out of poverty, which I'm excited with, working with him on his retirement and understanding that an athlete has so much life. You better have more money than you have life. That just comes real with being in that level. And so he has had the opportunity to be approached, a lot of course, you imagine, sponsors, endorsements, promoters. But he will have an opportunity to compete for the big belt, which is the WBC. And that is something that is exciting. So we're excited about what's going on. We want you all to understand, we appreciate your inviting us into your school sites with EXL. You know, Ann Pearson, her team, does a phenomenal job in working with Sean and Robert and all these guys, it's been really exciting. So we want to say thank you, but we are going to do our part as a community to do some things that we know we can reach these young people and talk to their parents a certain way that sometimes educators can't talk to them, and so we can do some things. And so we want to say thank you, we want to invite you to come through. In the July, we're going to most likely have a pretty big celebration with Terry. And so we wanted to let you all know that will be happening, we'll give you a notice. But I really think that we get a chance to celebrate one of San Bernardino City Unified School District's own as a world champion, WBC champion of the world, which is exciting. Okay, thank you all.
Wow. How amazing, thank you, thank you so much for, you know, always coming back and just keeping us updated, and you know, big congratulations to him, and we're so very proud of him. So absolutely let us know when you'll be holding that celebration for him, and I'll go ahead. Awesome, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Ariano real quick.
Terry, before you leave, you know, I just, I can't go without saying, I mean, I'm in tears up here because of the difference that you and your organization makes in our home town. hometown, man. You are changing, I say this all the time, you are changing the trajectory of kids' lives. And I just want you to know, man, I love what you stand for, I love what you do, I love that you love our kids and our community, man, and you're just a class act, man, and I'm just, I'm overjoyed with tears, man, because you're you're just, you're making a difference in our community, man. Our kids need people like you, so thank you, my brother, I appreciate that.
Superintendent, I appreciate that. I try to travel around as much as I can to keep up with you, go to these different places so I can, you know, see the world as usual. But also, too, I've got to make sure I make the commitment to my mother, to keep you abreast as to, you know, how she had a part in bringing me up, and that's what we're doing here. Okay, good. So you all have a great summer, be safe, and we'll, you know, we're going to be out there trying to bring home some more, some more hardware to the Dino, okay? Thank you all.
Thank you so much. Up next, we have Ms. Ashley Betisalcala. Welcome, and so good to see you.
Good evening, President Ceballos, Vice President Abilas Grande, Superintendent Ariano, and esteemed members of the board and cabinet. I'm Ashley Betisalcala, President of the San Bernardino Teachers Association, and I come before you tonight as the last time as president. And I'm speaking on behalf of our three thousand dedicated educators who worked tirelessly to shape the future of our students. June is the month where we celebrate pride in our LGBTQ community, and I want to once again thank the board for supporting our students, staff, and community by passing a resolution and also sponsoring our third annual pride event in our district. In these current times, it's extremely important for our community to come together and see through our actions that we support all students and families, and our staff, too. I also want to take a moment to recognize Dr. Marcus Funchess, as he will be leaving us soon to lead the Palm Springs Unified School District. Thank you, Dr. Funchess, for your collaborative and compassionate leadership, your integrity, purpose, and care for our staff, students, and community is unparalleled. And we will miss you at the negotiations table, but we wish you all the best as you embark on your next step in your journey as superintendent, and we hope we've trained you and prepared you well for that next role. Don't forget about us in the in the Dino. There's also a time of reflection on the past nine years that I've stood before you to speak on behalf of our membership. We've certainly been through quite a lot, a school shooting, ransomware attack, a global pandemic, wildfires, a few superintendents, and yet our members continue to show up for our students every day. And one thing I have learned during this time is how amazed I am by their creativity and resilience, no matter what is put in front of them. And we've always found a way to ensure that our students felt cared for and that they had the opportunity to continue to learn, no matter what was going on outside of those school walls, whether they were virtual or in person. I've also learned that as educators, because of our strong commitment to our students and our profession, we often forget to prioritize our own well-being. And it's imperative that we make sure that we support one another, look out for one another, ensure that we are all putting on our own oxygen masks first before we reach out to help others. San Bernardino City Unified School District has a working model that has been a unique amongst our peers. The relationship between the board, management, and our employee groups, particularly SBT A, is unparalleled. Our shared values and deep caring and concern for our students and each other make this district a great place to work and go to school. And we know that when we work together, we improve our results, and we continue to build an educational environment that is safe and effective. And even when we disagree, we find common ground and we're kind to each other. It's been my honor to serve on behalf of our members. Educators unions like SBT A have been an integral and valuable partner in improving wages, working conditions, because we know that working conditions for staff are our students' learning conditions. And SBT A, under Barbara Passachek Cox's leadership as our next president, will continue to advocate on behalf of our members because we know that there's always room to make things just a little better than we found them. And finally, I want to express our sincere appreciation to the board for your partnership. Strong partnerships lead to positive outcomes, and we value shared commitment to supporting educators and ultimately our students. Thank you for your leadership and also for your time tonight.
Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you so much, and we will definitely miss you. Okay, let's see, four point oh, public hearing, four point one, Selba Annual Budget Plan and Annual Service Plan, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, special education. I will now open the public hearing. Are there any public comments? There are none. This public hearing is now closed. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the San Bernardino City Unified School District's twenty twenty-five, twenty-six Special Education Annual Service Plan budget, plan and budget. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Can I get a motion? Second. All right, now discussion, seeing none. Vote, please. I'm sorry, I missed the motions. It was moved by Dr. Wyatt and second by Ms. Medina. It passed. Thank you. Four point two, San Bernardino, California, School Employees Association, Chapter one eighty-three, CSCA, Initial Contract Proposal Successor to the San Bernardino City Unified School District, Human Resources. I will now open the public hearing. Are there any public comments? No, there are not. This public hearing is now closed. Be it resolved, the Board of Education receives the initial contract proposal from the California School Employees Association, Chapter one eighty-three, CSCA. Second. Moved by Mr. Tillman, second by Mrs. Alexander. Any discussion? Seeing none. Vote, please.
I'm not getting a prompt to vote, Karen. There it is. Okay.
Okay, we're having technical difficulties, but it passed. Thank you so much. Five point oh, closed session, five point one, closed session, public comments. Are there any public comments? No. All right, five point two, closed session agenda, we will now adjourn to closed session. All right. Coming back to six point oh, action reported from closed session, six point one, expulsion of student. It resolved, the Board of Education accepts and adopts the recommendation and findings of the hearing panel based on a review of the panel's findings, of facts, and recommendations, and orders the expulsion of the following student with the identification number as listed below in accordance with the board rules and regulations and in compliance with Education Code Section forty-eight, nine hundred.
A move.
Second. Moved by Mr. Tillman, second by Ms. Medina. Vote, please. Okay, motion passed. Six point two, other closed session action, there are none at this time. Seven point oh, administrative reports and presentations, seven point one, career technical education presentation, and I'm going to go ahead and pass it over to Ms. Applegate.
Thank you. Board President Ceballos, Vice President Abilas Grande, Mr. Superintendent Ariano, our board and cabinet, and sorry, I'm a little under the weather, so my voice is a little odd, but I'm extremely proud to bring you our presentation on the career technical education program that we have and what our team has done to really provide access to our students with their pathway to position is phenomenal. I think you'll be very pleased to see, you've seen our information on pathways and how wonderful those were, and you've had that presentation, but we've always known that the ultimate goal of our pathways is to really provide our students with opportunities to be in a high-quality position in the workforce. So we're bringing that to you today. Dr. Venkatesan and her team, they're all here, have worked relentlessly to provide more access to college and also to, like I'm saying, the higher-paying, higher-quality jobs in the workforce here in our area. So without further ado, I'm going to introduce Dr. Venkatesan. She is here with her college and career team to present the information. Thank you.
Good evening, Board President Miss Ceballos, Superintendent Ariano, Board, Cabinet members, parents, and community. My name is Sudha Venkatesan, and I'm the proud director of secondary education and college and career. As part of our science vision, career technical education programs and paid internship opportunities are vital components in setting high expectations for college as well as career readiness. Today's main objective is to share the work we are undertaking to ensure the sustainability of our pathways and the substantial growth in the work-based learning. But before that, our superintendent asked that I share with the board an exciting event for our recently graduated seniors, that is cause for celebration. It is the instant admit day at Cal State San Bernardino. Whether it is the instant admit or creating our internal accountability criteria, my team of administrators and program specialists, my team is here today, they have worked extremely hard, along with our school site teams and other departments. So I do want them to please rise and be recognized. Please stand up. You deserve a standing ovation. I'm incredibly blessed to have a team like this. And I'm also incredibly blessed for the SBT A leadership that is here today. So I know we have Ashley, Barbara, and Birdy. My God, Ashley, our journey started with curriculum guides nine years ago. Ashley was my partner alongside the elementary director, and that is the starting point of our curriculum guides, and you know where it is today. It is a very well-written document, and thank you, Ashley, for your partnership. And we are looking forward, and you know, Birdy and Barbara has been in every step of the way, helping and supporting everything secondary and college and career. And then I have my partners in crime here, my colleagues, directors, and thank you, thank you. It's because of that, when days are difficult, they are the ones that have our back. Thank you for that. And my boss, thank you, Anna, for all your trust that you have, and our superintendent, the trust that you have in us in carrying this work. Instant admit day. Instant admissions tackle some of the biggest obstacles we hear from students and families about getting into college. First, we will consider what keeps many first-generation students from applying. Second, we will share how the California Colleges Guidance Initiative, what we will mention as CCGI, it's a platform that powers same-day admissions. Third, we have early results from those pilot project. And lastly, I will share what is our plan to expand this even further district-wide. Cost, complexity, and confidence are three major barriers for our students, especially for our first-generation students. These are powerfully addressed by instant admissions, which remove fees, it simplifies the process, and boosts student beliefs that college is within reach. So what is the CCGI? One of the initial first steps in preparing for instant admission is to implement CCGI. It's commonly referred to as a data bridge. It is a bridge through which data is securely transferred from school district's student information system to UC and CSUs. So UCs and CSUs can pull student transcripts early, even before the students actually apply into the college, and confirm their A-through-G readiness, and pre-approve them for instant admission. Without the CCGI platform, we would not be able to transfer the information to CSUs and UCs effectively to implement this instant admit day. Additionally, it is also a one-stop hub where students explore careers, track their A-through-G and GPA, and also complete their UC/CSU financial aid applications, everything in one place. Yeah, next. Recently, Riverside County Office of Education deployed CCGI countywide, teamed with CSU campuses for direct admits, covered one application fee per student, and their applications and enrollments spiked. Our district took a page out of their playbook and partnered with our local Cal State San Bernardino directly. The slide highlights SBCUSD's exceptional leadership in supporting students post-secondary and career planning through the CaliforniaColleges.edu platform. While San Bernardino County as a whole currently shows a thirty-two percent adoption rate, SBCUSD stands out with a hundred percent adoption rate, demonstrating our district-wide commitment to college and career readiness. Riverside took over a year to roll out its instant admit pilot. SBCUSD turned the same idea into reality in just eleven days. This is truly a collaborative effort involving school sites, counselors, and other departments in planning out logistics, fee waivers, collection of over eight hundred transcripts, and staging a two-day event that gave eligible seniors on-the-spot admissions and streamlined support. So what did this look like for our students? On the day of the experience, students arrived on campus and were warmly welcomed by both university staff and district staff. Students were celebrated for their dedication and achievement in high school, affirming that their hard work is paving the way for bright future. They then had the opportunity to immerse themselves in college life through an inspiring campus tour, engaging workshops, and a memorable lunch at the Coyote Commons. This experience sparked a new level of This experience sparked a new level of excitement and confidence, helping many students who were previously unsure begin to envision college as not just a possibility, but as part of their future journey. And now we move on to the data that shows this direct impact. Between 2024 and 2025, Riverside County saw a substantial 28.8% year-over-year increase in the college applications. In contrast, San Bernardino County experienced only a modest 2.6% increase. Despite San Bernardino's having a higher total number of application because our county is very large, Riverside County demonstrated significantly stronger growth and momentum in the college-going behavior. The data highlights the need to expand CCGI and instant admissions to boost college access across our county. However, that is not the story of San Bernardino City Unified. We achieved a 24.5% increase in the CSUSB applications, closely mirroring Riverside County's 28.8% growth. For the class of 2025, 205 more San Bernardino City Unified students applied to CSUSB compared to data from the previous year. This is because our district office, counselors, site staff and CSUSB partners all took initiative to launch our own instant admit day. And we decided to dig deeper into the admission data for those who applied. We found the following. Of the 1,011 students who applied, 980 completed applications and 914 students were admitted to CSUSB. This means our district achieved a 90.4% CSUSB acceptance rates for fall 2025. This is a powerful result, driven by our instant admit day efforts and strong collaboration between district staff, school sites and CSUSB. With 914 students admitted, this outcome reflects the impact of targeted outreach and support, proving our students are not only prepared, but fully capable of meeting the college admission requirements. Now that we have reviewed the application and admission data, I would like to share how many students have officially committed to CSUSB, that is, students who have accepted their offer of admission and confirmed their intent to enroll. Year-over-year, SBCUSD saw an impressive 106% increase in commitments, from 159 students in 2024 to 333 in 2025, exceeding the county's overall growth rate. The significant rise demonstrate that instant admit day not only boosted application and admission rates, but also inspired more students to confidently take the next step towards college by officially committing to CSUSB. In summary, SBCUSD shines. This is just the impact of two days. What are our next steps? We are proud to be one of the six districts in San Bernardino County, selected to pilot the direct admit initiative and to formalize the partnership with an MOU, with the county, with CCGI and Cal State San Bernardino. We are looking to expand this effort by partnering with additional institutions, including University of Redlands and UC Riverside. We want CSUSB instant admit day to grow in scope, extending it to four days and reaching up to 1,200 students, ensuring broader access across the district. To enrich the overall experience, we will incorporate resource fairs, alumni panels and expanded campus tours, all decide to support students on their path to college enrollment and success. So this has been our incredible work of our program specialist team that came together to plan out everything and work across the aisle to build this. So that concludes our first session.
Thank you so much, Mr. Tillman.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Do we have statistics, or will we have statistics about the actual number of students that attend in a row?
Right now, as of April, we know that 333 students have intended to commit, which is 100 intended to enroll, they have committed to go to the school. So it's 106% increase from the last year. That is the number as of now we have.
And I would like to see us do something similar to this at the, like at Valley College also.
Okay.
I took my great nephew to Valley College last week and to commend you and the staff and the sites.
Yes.
He had did his FAFSA, he attended the World Valley, he did his FAFSA and he had registered. But when we got there, he still had to do his orientation, he had to get his student ID number, he had nine schools in there, and Valley College wasn't one of them, and his FAFSA, so we added Samling Valley College, and he had to get a... It was some other things you had to do. So it'd be good if, I think it'd be good if you're doing a day like this at Cal State, that somehow we do a day like this at Samling Valley College.
We can do it.
Because you really would take advantage of all the work you've done in terms of doing the FAFSA and the registration, because it's not complete. He had to get a transcript also. I heard you mentioned transcripts here. Are the transcripts submitted electronically or something?
So the CCGI system has that, that is, so the CCGI system is actually, it connects our SIS to CSU and UC. So that is the data transfer system.
Do all those letters mean something? CCGI and SIS?
It is California Colleges Guidance Initiative Platform. So that is initiated by the state where it helps easy data transfers. That is actually what has helped us to do this, but not all school systems have done the sync properly. So it was a three-year work that our program specialists did to clean up the whole system. Now, every single thing that is in our course portal is in 100% sync. So whatever is the course we put in, the UCs and CSUs recognize those coursework.
I'm talking about just from the practical perspective, when they require a transcript, are we sending the transcript or they still have to do it themselves?
The transcripts get pulled. They are able to see the transcripts through the CCGI system.
Yes, my point is, like, when I went to Samling Valley College, they told him they needed his transcript.
Yes, but here we don't.
So can they do that at Valley College also?
We can definitely do that.
Because that's a big deal.
We can start.
You know, for me, it's literally the difference of attending college or not.
Yes.
You call them, say, hey, you going to college? Yes. Well, have you registered? Then you start hearing no and maybe, and then did you include Samling Valley College on your FAFSA to get your grant? I think so. Then you look at it, it's not there, but if you don't follow through, then he's not enrolled. This is a kid with a 3.7 GPA, you know what I mean? So, and I know there's other students like that, and you know, when I give my speeches, I talk about living in the richest country in the world, the richest state in, the richest state in the country, and it shows me to do your FAFSA. He was eligible for $2,800 in an Pell Grant and could take a loan for $7,000. And I told him, you don't have a job or anything, but they're allowing you to do this as an opportunity to complete your education, so take advantage of it. But I just want to commend you guys on the work you're doing in terms of the FAFSA and the registration, because that was a big deal and it made it a whole lot simpler. There's other steps to finish, and I just, I think the thing you're doing at Cal State, we should do at Valley College. There should be a day where for Samdino Unified School, there's students, we're gonna go there and complete the process if you want to attend Valley College. There's little things, I didn't know they were shut down on Fridays.
I think the CCGI system itself can also speak to California community colleges. So we will definitely explore that opportunity before the next admission comes through.
Thank you very much.
And we will report back to you on that.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. and Ms. Medina?
All right, thank you. Excuse me. A great point, Mr. Tillman. I appreciate that perspective and including that, but I just want to give kudos to all of you. This has been something that many of us has been fighting for, well, pushing for, for a very long time. And the fact that we're in this, we're at this point, we're doing, I mean, all of this work, it's amazing to see, and the percentages, and just to see where we're at, it's taken a long time, but we're here. And I do, so I see this as, as opportunities for all of our students to succeed in different aspects, right? I see the hierarchy of, not hierarchy, the, the, the different aspects, for instance, there's community colleges, there's colleges, CSUs, UC systems, all of that, we have, we have to start doing something as of now, which you're already doing, Cal State Universities, CSUs, and then, then community colleges, you mentioned. We have our career pathways, we have our trades, we have apprenticeships, pre-apprenticeships, we have certifications, we have so many different things that we want to ensure at the end of the day, that all of our students have these opportunities. And why not, at the higher level, we want to try to get the four-year university? I remember attending one of the meetings many years ago, before I was a school board member, and someone says, if we can, if a student can, why not direct them into a four-year university? It's, you know, place them there if they want to, of course. And then we move to other areas that maybe they can, they can follow through to, I mean, that they can see as a great opportunity as well. This helps all of our students at different perspectives, try to, at the end of the day, create that college-to-career, career aspect once they graduate high school. So I'm really proud of where we're at. When I first started, our district was down to 11% meeting the A-through-Gs. I mean, it was, and it was lower for certain students, you know, the demographics of certain students, it was even less than that. And so knowing the fact that we're, we're setting priorities and making sure all of our students are successful, it's a huge gain, and I appreciate Ms. Venkatesan, as well as the whole team, for doing this work. So thank you.
Thank you. It is, it's a very collaborative work between departments and school sites. So kudos to school sites who have really taken on this job. Thank you for that.
Mr. Santos?
Thank you. So, one, to answer Mr. Tillman's question, I know, not speaking to this, but my two seniors who had to turn in their transcripts on Monday, we used parchment, I know that much, so it didn't cost anything, I don't know if it's through the district, through the school, or how it works, all I know is that they went on to parchment, it didn't cost them anything, and they were able to send their transcripts all within less than two minutes. So we do parchment? It's essentially a website or a clearinghouse for transcripts, so traditionally, you know, when I went to school, you had to go to the registrar's office, request your transcript, give them a stamp, mail it, but now they just went on, online, their counselor had sent them the link, they went on to parchment, registered, and the transcript got sent to the university that they'll be attending in the fall.
Who would tell a stupid, a student about?
In our case, I know the counselors from Cajon emailed my boys individually, so I'm assuming they emailed all of the students? And then, again, they just registered, took two minutes, their email.
We went to admissions at Valley College, and they said, well, you're not enrolled because we need your transcript. So I took them to the wall building, and they were able to give them official, they wanted a sealed transcript in an envelope, so we were able to take it and get it turned in. I've been nice if Valley College was, said you can go to parchment and just have it sent over, but...
I can't really speak of the process, I just know as an apparent side, that's, that's all we did. It was pretty simple.
That system also exists where that, the parchment is like a transcript services, right? The difference with CCGI is this is a state-created one, it was part of that K-16 initiative, they wanted to just seamlessly connect so that kids didn't have to go through, and you know, there are some errors that could be potentially made. All that gets avoided when the, when these things, but it works within our CSU/UC system. It doesn't probably work for, the CCGI doesn't work for private schools. So if they want to attend, they still have to go through those services. But CCGI is, all the K-12 and then the public institutions, they are able to have access to it.
Right, so I, I get that, I was just trying to explain another, yeah, one's a private, the other one's at a state for my boy, so...
Of course, you work in the USC.
Has nothing to do with, I wish. Oh, so my question, sorry. Just, will you have the numbers of how many students will matriculate in the fall? Because how many accept, how many, you know, is larger number, how many say, yes, I want to go, you know, sign there, sir? And then versus, will you get the numbers on how many actually show up in the fall?
Right now, as I shared with, go back to the previous slide, the commitment one. Commitment slide. So we have 333 students that have committed, you know, to go.
Yeah, so, so I get that number, so how many, you know, and then there's the, how many of those will actually show up in the fall? That's why I'm saying, will you get access to those numbers?
I think some of my people have some internal connections, so they could get it. Other than that, it is, they usually, like around fall, they start putting it, like how many, where, but not specifically from our district, but I think we can get our numbers.
Okay.
How many really, like, made it to the college?
Right.
Yes.
And then my next question, and I think this, I had mentioned it before, this is awesome, it truly is, I think the thing I want to see at some point is also having some workshops, some sessions where we're working with the students so they better understand their award letters as they receive them, because that's important. Sometimes financial aid is what stops the students from going there, understanding student loans, understanding what type of aid. I'm sure most of our students will qualify for a Cal Grant, Appell Grant, State University Grant, all of those wonderful things that they don't have to pay back, but also understanding student loans. So that's, that's one of the things that, you know, as we move along with this wonderful program, also working with students to better understand their financial aid award letters to make better decisions.
That's what they do on that day, when, once they come in, they're, they're all, like, seated in a big hall, and everybody says, you're admitted, right? Kids look around, and then they're still digesting that news, and then what they do, they take them to different workshops, and there, the counselors from the college, as well as from our counselors, go in, and they support them for the application, fill up the application, go now, do the FAFSA, what other information do you need? So they, it's a wonderful day, and they walk them through these workshops, and they get all the, everything that is needed done in that day.
Right, so I get that, I'm saying, post that. So they don't get financial aid award letters usually till about April, late March, so that's, once they get those, and you know, not only the Cal States, anywhere they get, so making a good decision, this is my opinion, right? And what I do, my opinion is, you go to the school that gives you the most money, then the school that offers the major you want, those are kind of decisions, right? You don't want to be in debt $100,000 in undergrad, but that's what I'm kind of looking for, that at some point we develop a system, once the kids get those award letters in April, usually it's when they get them, sometimes March, making those kinds of decisions and really getting them to understand the money part of it.
Thank you.
Ms. Alexander?
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Venkatesan, for the great presentation, and congratulations to having such a large crowd here in terms of all your colleagues, I think that's excellent, and your staff, so we really appreciate that.
If you have my back here.
Yes. Just a question related to the 11 days, that's a success, can you, because a lot of this work happened even before you identified a strategy and a plan, so what fed into that in terms of just your leadership and preparation for the students to even be eligible?
Well, first, we had to pull up the transcripts from, in the district office to see who are all eligible, and then making sure that, contact school sites, talk to the counselors, and we also have what is called the college career readiness teachers, so talk to them, hey, we are going to arrange two buses, make sure that we can take 800 people, maybe 800 students in two days, so make sure you give us the list. So we arranged, and then also we worked with the Cal State to, you know, pay for the fee waiver. So we didn't want that to be a barrier for them, so we made sure that we picked up the fee waiver, and we worked with Cal State to make sure that the kids are fed when they go, and so they can eat in the, you know, Coyote Commons. So, and then we made, arranged buses, two buses for every school site. So it was like a whole excursion that was planned for them, and then students, like, were incredibly happy, like, you should have seen their faces, next time we will invite you when the instant admit days are, I mean, you see the faces of the students, it's incredible to see that.
Thank you, and I see that the number that we have, the goal is 1,200, but we had 1,200 students that were eligible this year, is there a reason why we have 1,200? Is there a reason why we have twelve hundred?
Oh, it, again, this was eleven days.
No, no, the goal for um, next year.
Oh, no, we are, we are moving it to four days. We are blocking, because every school goes and blocks time for this instant admit day. So we are blocking four days ahead of time. So we, we'll be able to take twelve hundred students too.
Per day, okay, okay.
Not per day, not per day, between these four days, it'll be twelve hundred students.
Okay.
That's our next target, from eight hundred, we are moving to twelve hundred.
Okay, and then in terms of systems, is it your department that's preparing even the, the parents and informing them in the middle, middle schools of the A through G requirements? So their students are prepared for once they get to high school? So systems, you're, you're addressing those systems when they're in middle school? So they're prepared and we see an increase of students that graduate with A through G requirements?
We have counselors at each of the middle schools. Uh, you know, the counseling team talks to the students. And then the high school counselors and high school team goes and talks to the middle school. There's orientation days and then we also go in and support as a secondary function.
Thank you.
Mr. Tillman?
The one thing I learned from um, my experience recently with my uh, great nephew, not one thing, but a lot of things. Number one, I do pay attention to cost. I asked him why he got accepted to La Ciaire, why he wasn't going to La Ciaire. He said, oh, because they're trying to tax me. I didn't know what that meant, that's like a new word for they're going to charge me a lot of money, right? And then, and then we need to encourage them to do password management. Because if they do the password, there's username and password, and they start forgetting those and the registration is a username and password. They forget what email address they used in order to do the registration. Those are all the practical things that end up occurring, uh, that can uh, cause barriers also. And then a question for Mr. Comnek, is there any reason why we can't allow seniors uh, to keep their Chromebooks? Uh, he had his Chromebook for three years, uh, and then he turned it in at the end of the senior year and I could only imagine what that Chromebook looked like. Do we really reuse a three-year-old Chromebook that a student had?
Great question, uh, Mr. Tillman. The only thing I could think of off the top of my head is that it would become a gift to public funds if we don't take any type of nominal cost, whether that's a dollar or otherwise. We could look at something like that, that could then be um, taken out of inventory.
Because my thought was, I know if you have a device that costs two hundred dollars, you depreciate it over three years, it truly is, the value is almost nothing, right?
Pretty much, yes.
And even if we said, like you said, we can charge my dollar, we should look at it. Because he was trying to do all this stuff on his phone. So, of course, I ended up ordering him a Chromebook because I asked him what kind of device you have. He said, I don't have one, I turned in my Chromebook, I use my mom's MacBook sometimes. But uh, it would just be better for all the kids if they were able to keep that device. So we should look into that.
I'll follow up on that, sir.
Thank you. And thank you all for your hard work, I appreciate you guys.
Thank you so much. Um, I, just let me chime in, uh, a few questions as well that I had. First of all, I want to say thank you so much, this really answers the question that I, that I had when we were meeting at the back of the room in terms of, um, so I'm glad to see that not only are we already doing it, but we, you know, we're, we're having great success with it as well. Um, I don't think that um, the question that Ms. Alexander um, asked was totally answered and I, I was interested in the question, so I'm going to rephrase it. Um, and if I didn't capture that question correctly, um, or just, I'll take it as my own then. In terms of that number right there, that one thousand two hundred, why are we utilizing that number? Um, why didn't we settle on only taking a thousand two hundred students? Why is that the target?
It's more the logistics from the college. Um, let me first, um, no, no, where's Tom? It's more, why was it thousand, one thousand two hundred? So, because of your special friendship? So, yes, they can only admit three hundred students a day, that is their capacity. So because of that, generally like, this time because we did it so quickly, like we just heard of it, okay, let's jump on this, right? So we got two days, so next time he has already blocked four days.
Okay, and would, in the future, would we be able to do more days?
And more schools, that's our hope, more schools and.
Okay, okay, awesome. And then the other question, well, not question that I had, I also wanted to kind of chime in and make a comment because I was understanding it differently when it came to like the, you know, the transcript uh, being transferred in parchment. Um, so it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, it's my understanding that it's a student's responsibility when they apply to a college to submit all their paperwork, transcripts included, right? So that's where parchment is utilized, so parchment is just a system that a student can utilize so that it's faster, right? You go in, you log in, you put your information and it transfer almost immediately from the school without you having to physically go to your high school, collect your transcripts. Otherwise, you would have to go down to your high school, ask them to give you a sealed, you know, which is what you did, Danny, um, and they can be opened, right? But with the system that you're talking about, this is not, it's not, um, the responsibility doesn't lie on the student anymore. It's the system that takes care of it.
Automatically speaks.
So I love that, so I would just also support, um, you know, what Mr. Tillman said to include those, uh, that, that, this junior college, the community college that we have here. Um, and I would say, you know, as many students as we can, right? Because not all students, one are going to be eligible for UCs or CSUs. Um, but even those that are eligible may not want to for whatever reason. So we want to make sure that they do have, I, I never stepped a foot in a college campus myself, um, until I was a parent. Um, I was, I had my son at eighteen, by the time I was nineteen, it was the first time that I ever set foot on, on a college campus and that was San Bernardino Valley College. And it is extremely intimidating, you know, it's like, where do I park? Where's the office? So if they can, even if it's here in the city and even if it's a junior college, if we can get them to just visit it, it opens so many more, um, you know, possibilities. Like, okay, I can do this, I can come, I, I'm familiar, I know where to park. It's not as intimidating. So I would totally agree and, and if we can expand that to even students that are not meeting the A through G requirements for that uh, community college, I think that that's what I would.
I agree, we are just, we have just scratched the surface and we are very excited with the results. And we are going to get very aggressive with this and include lot more. We need a lot of support for this and I know we have the board support and cabinet support. We will make sure that when October, November comes, we will do everything in our power to make sure every single student either goes to a two-year or four-year if they choose to go there.
You have our full support, so thank you so much.
Thanks.
And I'll, I'll pass it back to you.
So we go to the second pathway stated, status accountability report. So before I go into the accountability report, I would like to provide a brief historical context of our CTE programs. Three years ago, CTE operated as a separate entity, although there were areas of overlap with secondary education. Under the leadership of Mrs. Applegate, the two departments were consolidated into a single department, known as Secondary Education, College and Career. This unification created meaningful opportunities for strategic collaboration among staff and fostered a strong alignment between academic and career-focused initiatives. As the integration progressed, it became increasingly clear that establishing a cohesive framework to guide our collective efforts were both essential and beneficial. That gave rise to this purposeful pathway framework, which you are all very familiar with. I've actually shown you in few of the CTE presentations before. Now we are taking it one step further. By turning inward and looking at our own internal accountability system for pathways. While the CCI gives us a statewide measure, our pathway status accountability report allows us to dig deeper, campus by campus, pathway by pathway, to examine the quality, equity, and impact of the experiences we are providing our students. So the slides provide an overview of our reach and commitment to CTE pathways as a district and the number of students it impacts. Almost sixty-seven percent of our students are enrolled in the CTE pathway as a direct result of your support board. I'm also happy to report that San Bernardino City Unified is in green for two major dashboard metrics, our graduation rate and our college and career readiness indicator. Even more encouraging is many of our student groups are outperforming the state average when it comes to being prepared in this area. Another sign that we are moving in the right direction. Our CTE pathways directly impact the CCI measures and it is all happening right here. So criteria levels explained. To guide our discussion on pathway quality, we identified three key local criteria to gauge effectiveness. One is criteria number one. That was our superintendent's thing, that we need to make sure that we prepare our students who continue to stay in our community and continue to flourish here. So labor market demand was very important for us because of that. Our first metric considers how well a pathway aligns with workforce demand in our region. We used the top ten in-demand industry sectors as reported by the California Employment Development Department. High-demand pathways constitute about sixty-one percent of our local labor market and represents the top three industry sectors. Medium-demand pathways constitute about thirty-point-five percent of the local labor market and represent industry sectors ranked in the next four through seven out of the top ten. Low-demand pathways constitute about eight-point-five percent of our job market, which have either slower projected growth or more limited job openings locally. It's important to note that labor market conditions change over time and that it reflects a snapshot in time. Criteria number two is the pathway enrollment. Our second metric is guided by two questions. First, are we reaching enough students through marketing and interest in pathway? And second, are we being fiscally responsible with our FDU allocations? Using the class size data, we categorize pathway as high enrollment if the pathway average class size had twenty-eight or more students, medium enrollment if the pathway average class size was twenty-one to twenty-seven, and low enrollment if it is twenty or fewer. These three thresholds are based on district data and comparisons with other core classes. High enrollment not only reflects strong interest, but also aligns with our goals about equity and efficiency, making sure all students have access to high-quality pathway and experiences. Then criteria number three is the pathway completion rate. This criterion evaluates how effectively students are completing their pathway courses, a key contributor to our college and career indicator. It provides insight into whether students are gaining the skills and experiences needed for graduation and post-secondary success. A completer is defined as a student who successfully finishes both the concentrator and capstone course within the same pathway, earns a C or better in each, and completes at least three hundred hours of career technical instruction. So we compare the pathway rates against the school's own average. If they scored above average, they were rated high. If they were near the school's average, they were rated medium. And they were, if they are below school's average, they were rated low. By using these three metrics together, we almost did a quantitative and qualitative analysis on that. Labor market enrollment, enrollment and completion rates, we were able to provide a very thoughtful, well-rounded view of pathway performance across the district. This framework allows us to be transparent, strategic, and student-focused as we continue to refine and elevate our CTE program. I really want to give kudos to my college and career team that had poured into this data for nearly four months to come up with very refined, simple criteria and look at, you know, the pathway and enrollment across board. Thank you for that. Next. Labor market demand. So you can see these are the top ten in the industry sector for our region. This slide shows you that there are eighteen pathways in our district that meets the top sixty-one percent through three industry sector, logistics, health services, and government. There are twenty pathways in our district that meet the medium thirty-point-five percent through four industry sectors, hospitality, business, construction, and manufacturing. Currently, seven of our pathways are aligned to industry sectors identified as low labor market demand and an additional eight pathways that fall outside of the recognized ten local industry demand sectors, representing the remaining eight-point-five percent. But before we go to the next couple of slides, I would like to draw your attention to the CTE pathway criteria, twenty-three, twenty-four in your folders. As this identifies the overall high-level pathways, medium-level pathways, and low-level pathways, based upon the three criteria. So the next slide shows you that these are the ten pathways in San Bernardino at this point of time satisfies all three criteria at a high level. They are setting the foundation in our first year of pathway accountability. Then we have the next nineteen of our pathways across multiple high schools, ranked in the middle level, meaning they are approaching towards success. Then there are twenty-four pathways that are in the lower, lower range of our baseline assessment. That said, there is also now very clear indicators of where targeted interventions are needed, such as whether there is low enrollment trend, whether they are limited capstone completions, or whether they lack current industry alignment. However, we must take a very nuanced approach when reviewing these programs. For example, Pacific High School's food services and hospitality pathway. It serves many students in our moderate, severe special education population. And however, because they do not graduate with a traditional high school diploma, their participation does not reflect in the CCI points. So each one of them should be very considered individually on why they are ranked where they are ranked. So this is just a preliminary data applying these three criteria. So our next step is while we cannot control the labor market trends, we can influence pathway enrollment and completion through intentional outreach, program design, on maintaining high expectations, just like we do in the core academic classes. Some pathways were not originally built with labor market alignment in mind. But going forward, our focus is on refining pathways to support workforce demand and engage student interest. We are using baseline data to drive continuous improvement. Once the class of twenty-twenty-five data is finalized, we will assess all pathways using this newly adopted criteria and provide each site with an annual CTE pathway criteria summary to enhance ongoing planning and support efforts. And this concludes, before we go to our final topic. I'll pause for questions here.
Ms. Medina?
Yes, again, thank you for this presentation. I was really impressed with how you were able to come with those, um, the criteria, one, two, and three, and how you outlined it. And then even then, you were able to still try to figure out, okay, well, let's, let's, there's some schools that have a lot of attendance rates, a lot of students in the classroom, but yet what is really causing them not to complete it? And so, uh, so I do appreciate that, this is more of something that we've been asking to try to see which are the pathways that are, are, um, you know, are doing great and then what areas we can improve on. And then really delving into why it's, it's doing the way it's doing. Uh, but I do appreciate even for the, the high-level pathways. And I know that, um, within the educator program, there's educators for tomorrow, that one's a nine. And it seems like it's. And it seems like it's doing really well. And I did, students from, some students from ICUC actually mentioned that they were even considering how can we expand the educators for tomorrow? Right now, there's a high need for educators. There's a bill right now currently, can't remember what number it is, but it is for substitute teachers, guest teachers. That there's such a decline that they're trying to move it from thirty days to sixty days because there's a need. So then how can we shift that in trying to bring in more educators within our schools? Not just in our schools here, but in surrounding school districts as well. And that might be another opportunity. I was looking at the childcare occupations pathway at Sangre Gornio High School. And maybe even considering, I'm not saying you should do this, but maybe even considering it, moving it to where it's, it does both where it's early childhood, elementary type. We're still, you know, in trying to increase educators of tomorrow within that program. Just an idea. I'm not saying that you should do it, but just trying to look at areas that we know for sure is a high demand and high needs area. But I do appreciate this and I appreciate the process you came up with, the whole team came up with the criterias and so forth. So thank you.
I should acknowledge it was our superintendent in a casual two-minute meeting said, named the two criteria of labor market demand and the pathway enrollment. And then we said the third one is a dashboard metric, so we should add the third one. That's how we came up with the three criteria.
Thank you for that. Mrs. Alexander?
Thank you for the explanation. In terms of the top ten pathways that we have listed here. And maybe you already said that where, and because probably about six out of the ten seem to, in terms of industry alignment, there's an expansion of just the need for robotics. So are we looking at infusing robotics as a piece of their certification for these or what is the plan?
So I can get the details of that. Robotics is something that exists in pathways, but I can't, like on top of my head say which, because we have fifty-six pathways and many of them, they use it. Just because, another thing I really want to note is these are the top ten in our region. That doesn't mean the pathways that exist in ours and are doing well are not necessarily providing job opportunities. It may not be within our region. It may be somewhere else. So what, we have to have some idea of how our, what we are doing is contributing to our community. So this was the first snapshot and we will get you where the robotics programs are being used.
Okay, and just so I'm clear, I'm more curious to know, is it a part of their curriculum? And is there opportunity space to see if, like logistics, for example, we know that robotics is big. But when we look at health services, robotics is also big. So just looking at the curriculum to see is that even considered, even if it's a certification and just the awareness of the bots and understanding the capabilities of the utilization of the bots. I'm not saying make sure they come out and they're able to use them, but just making sure if we're doing industry alignment, that that's part of what we're looking at from an analytical perspective and ensuring that we can check it in terms of their curriculum, that there's an understanding and maybe expectation of what they would have to be aware of and know what to do if they go into that industry. So something to flow it out a little bit more, a consideration.
What I can assure you is most of the curriculum, remember they have to do two years of curriculum. And most of those curriculum come from those industry standards. And many of our schools follow very high-quality curriculum, which, and then again, if they are part of those high-quality curriculum and if there is a pathway that requires those robotics to be built in, the curriculum builds that in. So only then we get that A through G approved. And then that is why it is important for our students to take those two courses in order and pass them with a C or better, so get the A through G credit, as well as they are able to pass certifications in those things.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Medina?
I have just one more question with regards to how we're marketing this and how are students able to attend the pathways? For instance, if a student is at Serrano Middle School and the pathway that they're interested is in Arroyo Valley High School, maybe like as an example, what do they have there? One of the pathways there. Are students able to cross different high schools for those pathways? Do they apply? Can they do that?
I think the RCS still holds good in that RCS they can provide reason and I can ask Dr. Rodriguez to address that. They can still use, interested in that pathway in that school. And I think that if there is a space there, they will be.
Because we don't want to limit students in certain areas because you live, like for instance, in the Sangre Gornio area, that you're going to head to that high school, which it's a great program, has many great programs, but they're interested in a pathway that's across the city, across the district. That is their more passion or that's their area of interest. And so maybe providing those opportunities for our students to be able to apply and enter those high schools as well would be very important. And then it's also, once we get to that point, also marketing and maybe having the city or the school district share to all of our school sites, what are the pathways out there? I'm not sure if we currently do that at the site, but I'm wondering, once we're able to have students apply to other school sites, that they're also able to see what's out there for other school sites.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I do want to add, actually to that note. I've expressed it before and it kind of goes with what Ms. Medina was saying. Even if the RCC or CCR, that, you know, inter-district transfer request, even if we do do that, it's not a guarantee, right? It's dependent on space. And then those spaces go primarily to the folks that, whose school they belong to, right? So if I am a student in the vicinity of Arroyo Valley and that's my home school, then those spots would go first primarily to me and then anybody else. And if there's transfers as spaces become available. So that to me, although there is that option, it's not, it's kind of like what the magnet schools problem was, right? Or even the dual immersion program was, when it's not at every school, you're less likely to be able to access it. That's just the reality of it. In addition to that, there's less availability for exposure as well, right? So if I'm a student at, let's use Serrano Middle School, for example, and I go to my feeder high school and that's not available, a lot of, a lot of times what our students are lacking is exposure, right? So you don't know what you don't know. You don't know what you might be interested if you don't have access to taste a little bit or be exposed to it. So what I would like to see hopefully is where we create some sort of pathway at every high school within those, within those top labor market demands, right? So what is the top labor demand, you know, areas, right? So let's say it's logistic, health, you said logistics, health, and government. Then I would like to see at least one pathway of logistics at every high school, one pathway of health services at every high school, and one pathway of government at every high school. If those are, you know, the top labor demand markets. It doesn't have to be the same one. I know Cajon has, for example, the dental health pathway. That's not to say that we replicate dental pathways at every high school, but at least within the sector. I think I would like to see that. And then speaking of Cajon and dental pathways, you know, when you look at, for example, Arroyo Valley and Cajon, they're side by side on one of your slides, you know, you have business logistics, you have education, then you have constructing opportunities. Those are not the same as a dental health pathway. And those are some of the concerns that have been raised over and over by constituents on the west side, right? That although they're great programs and they've gotten recognitions, they're not the same, right? On one, you're on top of roof, you know, putting solar panels. Where in another one, you're exposed potentially to become a dentist, right? Those are not equivalent when we talk about those type of careers. So I would like to see a little bit more of that across the district, distributed a little bit more equitably.
Ms. Medina?
Sorry, only because you mentioned that. My, back many years ago, the idea was how do we do this at all of our high schools? But the problem is that there's, it can, it can cost a lot of money to try to create these programs within each of our high schools, all of our high schools to have something similar. And I don't want to, I don't want to say we can't do it. One of the conversations during that time was to look at bus transportation, city, you know, city buses where students are able to, you know, if they do decide they want to go, they are supposed to go to Sangre Gornio but want to go to Arroyo, they can get a bus pass where they can transfer to that site with no issues. And that way they're going to a school of choice or high school of choice. And that was part of the conversation. Mr. Gallo, Mike Gallo was one of the board members then and was also looking at how we can actually do that effectively. But then the conversation kind of fizzled with so many pathways out of our high schools and students ended up wanting those ones. But I really do believe that maybe there's an opportunity where we do provide like school of choice or pathways of choice and provide the transportation for students, high school students to go to that school site as a way of, of kind of, you know, addressing some of this where students are able to choose which pathway they want to. But I do agree, we have too many, we have a lot of pathways that maybe we have to really look and delve in. And I'm glad you created the criteria that we can look at which ones are the most effective. There's going to be students that really want a pathway that might be considered eliminating. Maybe narrowing them down to one, one pathway or, I'm trying to think of ways. I'm sure the department has thought of all of these as well, but maybe making it school of choice that can help alleviate some of the cost.
Mr. Tillman?
I think the thing you have to remember is, like when we did magnet schools, is because we initially got funding for desegregation and integration. And we had that for many years, even while I was initially on the board. That money has, in essence, gone away. We don't get any money for D nine anymore, do we?
Yes, sir.
So we decided that the programs are so important that we still wanted to spend additional money to keep them going. But there is a cost. Is there any money specifically for CTE programs in the state budget?
Yes, we do receive. I would have to research that, sir.
But that's one, that's part of the thing that determines the ability to finance these things. And the sad thing is all this comes down to money. And you talk about transportation, our transportation costs are really high right now. And we're looking at ways to even try to reduce those costs. The thing that costs us the most money with transportation was the changing of the start times. Am I correct in saying that? So right now, because we switched to start times, it's probably additional, what, twelve million dollars that we're paying for transportation?
A little higher than that. Right now, our costs are pushing about fifty-seven million.
Which is substantial. So I know when you say we want to give transportation to students, they can go where they want. I don't think we can afford it. The cost would be tremendous if we guaranteed that every student got transportation. I heard you say city bus, that's another thing. But I just want to make sure that we realize that we try to do as many of these things that we can, but it is limited by the amount of funding that we receive.
By insinuated city bussing, because that was the same concern back then as well.
Exactly.
And if I may, I think one more aspect that we need to consider, and you'll see in the next session of the presentation, our industry partners have adopted certain schools. So we have certain unions, we have a dentist who adopted Cajon, who's working directly with that pathway. And so it's difficult for them as well to spread their services around seven, eight, nine comprehensive high schools. And so that's another reason why we've localized some of the pathways, because it's been the choice of our partners to work with a particular school site.
And that's completely understand, thank you for that additional information. That's completely understandable. That's why I'm saying, you know, not duplicating necessarily a dental pathway or just actively seeking new partners, right? It doesn't have to be the same dentist. And maybe we can go out and, you know, develop new partnerships. So I still, you know, and I'm still going to continue to advocate, I'm still going to continue to mention this because the access is just not there. And that's, that's the reality. You know, as much as we want to say, yes, we have this transfer, yes, we have this, that, and the other. And even if we were to provide bussing, a lot of students don't feel safe taking public transportation. My son was one of them. So, and parents sometimes don't feel comfortable sending their kids on public transportation either. So there, in my opinion, there's nothing better than to be able to have a minimum level of, you know, school, community, site-based services that we provide at every, ideally at every school. So I'll continue to advocate for, for something like that and, you know, as funding permits, obviously. But thank you. I'll pass it back to you.
I do want to commend Dr. Funches, especially with the tomorrow's Educators Academy pathway. HR department and especially Mr., Dr. Funches has taken an incredible, you know, making sure that it functions and works very closely. So kudos to Dr. Funches on that. Thank you. And with that, we'll go to some work-based learning data. So. So this year was filled with impactful work-based learning experiences for our pathway students, which created hundreds of hours of hands-on opportunity for skill attainment and a significant increase in industry-aligned certification. Again, SBC USD leads the way in providing multiple industry-recognized certifications. On this slide, you will see the top two to three industry certifications student earn at each site. This is a sixty-seven percent increase in the number of certifications over the previous year. We would like to acknowledge the heavy lift of our link learning program specialists at our school site for making this happen. And again, you're and again, you're familiar with the slide. So I try to keep the slide so that like when we come back for the board presentations, we are familiar, we don't have to start from the beginning. So these are the different types of work experiences. So we have steadily expanded both the diversity of work learning, work-based learning experiences available to our students, including micro internships, internships, pre-apprenticeships, and apprenticeships. In the year twenty-four, twenty-five, we are proud to report a three-fold increase in the micro internships and internships. In addition, for the first time in SBC USD history, we applied for over two-hundred-fifty registered pre-apprenticeship placements in twenty-four, twenty-five. These placements provided students with direct industry engagement and automatically generated CCI points for their school. Additionally, over the past year, we have actively partnered with employers across all five of the inland employers fastest-growing labor sector. Transportation and warehousing, healthcare, construction, professional services, education, and administrative services. This will help us meet the future needs of the inland employer. As you can see in the slide, we strategically developed and provided micro internships that reflect high-growth industry sectors. Our engagement with local industry partners was deliberate and focused, resulting in a four-fold increase in micro internship opportunities within these three key sectors over the past year. And kudos to our workforce coordinator, Ms. Ramirez, who is here with us today, is working closely with SB County Workforce to launch Pathways to Position, a groundbreaking effort that is currently underway to make our district the first in California where CTE pathway experiences can count towards required work experiences for county employment. And Mr. Ariano, whose role is on the workforce development board, has been very key in advancing this initiative. He's still working the board. So this is, if, if county has a job opening and we have two years of this, if the students are passing our two years of this coursework with a C or better, it is counting towards the work experience with them. Yeah, I have a question.
Sorry, Mr. Tillman. I was mesmerized.
Well, I just encourage you to bring back what they had forty-five years ago when I started with the county in nineteen eighty. They used to have a student aid position. They had a student aid position. So if you were in high school, it was student aid one and a student aid two. When you went to college, it became a student intern. But I worked those positions for six years. It was able to buy back my time to go towards my retirement. But it was a big deal because my initial job I got was in hydrology and water resources. It's because I had a drafting class in the ninth grade. And so, I knew how to draw, uh, I could draw parcel maps, but this is another story. But um, but if they did those positions again, it'd be a good thing. Because right now, they don't have a position for student aides and student interns. They have what they call a public service employee position, but you literally have to know somebody in order to get the job.
Do you have any connections that we can reach out to?
Well, he said he's on the board, right? That's why I said they have those, those old, um
If you have any connection seriously, we would like to take you up on that offer and we will go and talk to them.
Sure, I mean, it, I, it'd be a good idea. They, they should change that whole public service employee thing back to a student aide, student intern. I literally got my ad out of the newspaper, was able to apply and then uh, get the job. Because a lot of people are disenfranchised. So, because of the way they do it now, if you don't know somebody that works at the county, you literally can't get that um, entry-level position. So, I just encourage us to um, talk, have a discussion. I'd love to, you know, be involved in the discussion, but it, it make, it makes a big difference. Or would, or could.
Ms. Alexander?
Um, how about with the city? Do we have a partnership with the city as well?
Right now, we have this with the county. And as I said, um, many of you have given us a lot of those connections. I have one more slide. Can I finish? Because I'm gonna answer your questions on that. Is that okay? And then I'll, I'll answer your question. Um, so the work-based learning next step, this is going to be our last. Um, we want to expand micro-internship. We want to increase student participation in registered pre-apprenticeship and also strengthen the industry partnership. So, and I know sp- especially like with the elec- uh, the IBEW, Electrical Workers Union, we work with them now. Western State Carpenters, we work with them now. And many of you I see across, you all have come to many of those partner events and helped us out. And then San Bernardino Airport has helped us out tremendously. University of Redlands have done it. And California University of Science and Medicine, Mr. Ariano took us there. And then Esri, you know, and County Workforce Development right now. Um, and also, you know, we are doing events like industry partner events, that CTE and Mile in My Shoes, CTE Lunch and Learn, and many of you attended those events and thank you for that. And it's very important, like I know you, whenever you have these connections, you reach out to us and please continue to do that. Immediately, we start, our team starts developing on that. Right now, we don't have anybody in the city. And uh, if you know someone, we will take you up on that offer. So, one item I really want to specifically um, also share here and we are very proud of. It was a direct request also from um, Ms. Abilis Grande about this beautiful CTE course guide. And I know you showed us a sample of it. So, we came up with a beautiful CTE course guide for our district. It's very comprehensive. It has all the connections to the dual enrollment and the colleges. And um, we are very proud of that. And thank you for giving us those ideas and opportunities. Because the moment you give us those ideas, we develop on them. So, please continue to help us with that. Um, with that, I also want to make sure that we provide uh, that one-pagers for you in the packet. So, that is one pager of what all, if, especially if the community is asking what, yes, those are the one-pagers for each one, what pathways exist in each one. And the next, before I conclude this presentation, I would like to share a short video on some of the events and opportunities our students have had this year. A special shout-out to San Bernardino International Airport team for going above and beyond in creating four micro-internships spanning key areas of airport operations. Student reaction said it all. I have never, ever been to an airport. And I had no idea that this was even a job at an airport. So, that was very powerful to hear that. More so, this is a force for us to create set opportunities. And thank you for being a steadfast partner with us in giving us those opportunities. So, now let's see all of this in action. So, I do want to I do want to conclude this presentation by thanking the cabinet members and especially my boss, Mrs. Applegate, for the trust and confidence she placed in me and bringing these departments together so we can have a cohesive approach to how we do business at our high schools. Thank you for that. And thank you, Mr. Ariano, for your continued support. Thank you very much. And thank you both for your incredible connections and support that you can give us. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and start with Ms. Abilis Grande.
Yes, uh, just fabulous as always. I always feel so very, very proud to be on this school board when I hear your presentations especially. I just, uh, I was a lifelong student from the time I was thirty-seven till I was like my fifth, late fifties. I was a, I, a professional student. It was my life. And uh, so, it was interesting that, you know, I'm a substitute teacher currently at Harupa. And so, I have to give credit where credit's due, that idea for um, putting in all the schools where you can continue your education, that we've worked so hard and starting here at the high school level. Um, that came from um, them. And I brought home a booklet. Um, I did ask permission. So, they let me bring one. And uh, because they want them out in the community. They want, they want you to leave them places. So, I hope we, we do. I hope we're doing that. I hope we're leaving them in doctors' offices and, and clinics and, and, and have them become like a view book. Uh, I was nineteen years old at a bus stop with two babies and a stroller, a single parent. And uh, I was waiting for a bus and a student left a view book there from the University of Redlands. And I had loved school. I had dropped out to get married during the Vietnam War. A lot of us did that. So, I looked at that view book and it was very beautiful. It was like this, but it had other pictures of uh, some of the classes, like Greek mythology. And I remembered thinking, what a wonderful book. What would it be like to go to college? And the bus came for me and I almost thought about taking it. And I thought, no. I was certain that whoever left behind that beautiful book would come back for it. So, I didn't want to, to take it. I didn't feel like it belonged to me or that dream belonged to me, is what I felt. And so, I left it and I climbed aboard, aboard the, the bus. I have two babies dragging a stroller and a diaper bag. And I looked back and I saw that view book. And I said, maybe, maybe someday. And once I started going to college, I never stopped. So, it's very important, these, we never know how something like this will trigger something in someone's soul or mind or heart. So, thank you for your, for your work. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Wyatt?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to your team, Dr. Vinica Tesson, for a very thorough presentation and quite detailed, quite comprehensive. You know, um, the board, uh, we worked very hard on creating and developing a community workforce agreement. You know, and I'm looking at our apprenticeships here. And in twenty-two, twenty-four, we had twelve students. Twenty-four, twenty-five, fifteen students. And so, I know one of our hopes, one of our desires when we developed that CWA was to increase these apprenticeships. Right? So, I'm wondering, you know, the Building Trades Council consists of, I think, seventeen or eighteen different trades. That's a tremendous amount of trades, right? And if even we are able to get one student in each trade, that's eighteen, that's more than we've ever done. So, my challenge to you and to our local employers, our local unions is, you know, let's put our mouth where the money is, right? Let's get it done. You know, we did this to better serve our community, to keep people employed right here in the city and to hire them right out of the city. So, when I look at that number, I don't want to say I'm disappointed, but I know we could do a heck of a lot better. I mean, it's the whole reason behind it, the CWA. And I know, I don't know if our business partners are out there watching, but I'll be making some phone calls this week to them and saying, hey, you guys want a, a community workforce agreement? We've delivered on that. Now, it's time for them to deliver. I know you can't do it on your own. So, I'm gonna leverage that against them and say, what's going on? Okay, because I know that they just got a job. Part of it's our new public safety building. They let me know that. I don't know if you knew that as well. And we have other jobs in the near future. So, our students, you know, they deserve that, number one. You guys have developed the program, the pathway for them to go there. Now, we need to contact employers and make sure they're employing our kids, so.
All these pre-apprenticeships that
Mouth, money, money, mouth, you know, I mean, Ms. Abilis Grande.
All the pre-apprenticeships that we have created, um, will translate into apprenticeship. Because apprenticeship is after eighteen when they leave high school. So, pre, that is why pre-apprenticeships gives us the CCA point. So, the apprenticeship numbers have increased. So, they will all translate, and many of them are in the industry. This fifteen that we have shown is actually the ones that we are doing it, um, not the
Not them?
Yeah.
Okay. And that's why I'm asking, because
Thank you.
Thank you to us for doing that for them, right? But again, it's time for our industry partners to employ our kids and our young men and young women in the industry sectors. So, great job. Thank you.
Ms. Alexander?
Good. Thank you for the thorough presentation. Um, question though, in terms of the industry partners, how often do we change? I mean, is it something that we revisit every year, every five years? How often do we change our industry partners?
Some of them, I think, um, I can get, some of them, for years together, they are, they are, the, we are in partnership, especially many schools are having it. And we try to continue to expand our industry, especially after Chelsea came on board. We have expanded a lot of industry partners and we continue to keep them warm. That's why we invite them to Lunch and Learn. And this time, industry, you, you were there uh, at that event. And when you, when they saw how the program specialist and the industry partners interacted with each other, that's again, we are trying to make connections. I mean, we can't be sitting and doing all those. It's, at the end of the day, it has to move to the school site where they can really work very closely with the pathways. So, um, we are trying to provide such opportunities and we continue to keep our industry, hey, we are here and, you know, we want you to continue to support us.
I think that's great. And I would just like to encourage that, maybe it's already been stated, but I want to say it again. Our industry partners, some of them are in large organizations and they have a lot of resources. And one thing that we see in corporate environments now, we have a lot of generations that are in the workplace and some of them are retiring. Um, so perhaps this is a great opportunity with our industry partners that are in larger corporations for them to showcase all the great work that we're doing um, within our district to see if maybe there's some untapped talent that can come help with um, our certification programs or even just come and see. Because what's happening, I know at least in our corporation, we're encouraging people to come back and share their volunteer hours. So, is there some incentive with that? And um, I don't know about the governance of every organization, but I know for us, we're incentivizing employees to get out there and really volunteer their time and connect in communities and particularly with school districts. So, maybe this is something we can leverage with our industry partners that might have that access. The other one is our chambers. So, our Chamber of Commerce in not only San Bernardino but surrounding areas, maybe leveraging their talent as well to help us from a marketing standpoint, because this is great. What we're doing is awesome. Um, and just being able to showcase what we're doing, but also create a, a network of professionals that maybe we have not tapped into and some talent that we can benefit from.
Yeah, um, actually, Mrs. Applegate is um, very intentional about it. She um, we, during our one-on-ones, we look at different industry partners and she also says like, what are the ones that we have not connected with? And how closer as well as a little bit um, in Riverside County and all that, what are the industries that we can come? And she's a huge proponent and you, I mean, she goes into all these industry events and make sure that she, we form those connections. So, I think having those connections and trying to reach for and just, and ha- also getting connections from you all is what is going to continue to expand. And we will continue to keep them warm.
Thank you. I'd just like to encourage the pipeline. So, thank you.
Ms. Medina?
I want to look at um, the, the CTA Lunch and Learn. That was an amazing opportunity to kind of really look at what each high school was doing. And they were selling this to each of us that were kind of doing a rotation. Um, I love to see this. Uh, there was two individuals that were there that were part of the community that mentioned that they loved it and they wish other, you know, community members can see what's actually going on. Because I know that although we're doing a great job in marketing and showing everything that we're doing, there's still this negative stigma within San Bernardino. So, then if we were to have community leaders, community partners, um, also be part of that. Um, if we can have even parents just to see what's out there, if there's like opportunities where, I mean, that, the, that, what you created there is an ideal way to kind of show people in real time and re- at, in those moments, what these programs offer. And each high school were selling and they were, they were sharing everything. That was, it was amazing to see, honestly. I left uh, inspired. And so, I love to see how we can expand those CTA Lunch and Learns um, for um, you know, partners, parents, even students. I don't know if that's, you know, what that would look like, but I'm sure you all can, you know, maybe create some ideas, uh, come up with some ideas there. And I also love the fact that you created this pamphlet that says, and it has a message there. It's um, pathway to position. And, and when we look at career in college, um, I, I've always been pushing in the beginning especially, you know, we want to make sure our students go, get their A through G's, that go to these four-year colleges. But I understand there's a huge spectrum between the, the four-year college to actually, you know, position. And, and, and I think we're meeting all of those needs in different ways. And we want to make sure at the end of the day that the students end up deciding. Because I remember back when my child was in high school and she wanted to go to a four-year college. And it was, and you know, unfortunately, back then, uh, many years ago, uh, the counselor said, well, you can go to a community college. And so, I, I remember there was someone from Loma Linda University, it's like, no, 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 tell your daughter, no, push back. She, if she wants to go to a four-year college, you know, she wants to go to a four-year college. Don't, don't have, you know, them try to sway her to go, applying for a community college. And she did. She ended up going into a four-year college and graduating everything. Um, but I, I, we also want to make sure that whatever the student is looking at, and if we can provide those opportunities, we don't want to, we, we could inform them, but at the end of the day, we don't want to sway them away from what they really want to do. If they're able to do it, you know. Of course, if they're not able to do it, then we want to provide those opportunities of what else is out there for them. So, at the end, they can still be successful um, in whatever they choose. And I do agree with, with you, um, Dr. Wyatt. We do have to hold, you know, apprenticeship programs accountable. And I look at the number and I, but I, at the same time, I kind of, okay, this is the, we, we passed it, was it December, January? I can't remember if, when it was that we passed it or even February. Uh, let's, if, if by next year, we don't see that these numbers are growing, then you know, we have to hold you accountable at the same time. So, uh, the intention was, of course, making sure that our, our students here come back with a good-paying job that can sustain themselves and their family, buy a home and all of that. Um, if we're not seeing those numbers increase, then it, it becomes an issue. Thank you.
Mr. Tillman?
I think to some extent too, we, we have to realize that we have students in our district that are working for small businesses. And um, so we're not, the counts you show are not total, you know. I did the speech at a Royal Valley this year and one of the students there, his dad owns a tire shop. And this kid I've been watching him grow up, but he does everything. owns a tire shop, and this kid I've been watching grow up, but he does everything, not just the tires, but the computer system, keeping everything running. So I encouraged him to go to college to make sure he builds his expertise. I was there handing out diplomas to a young man, he said, remember me? I was at your house, we put in your air conditioning unit. The company that I called to do it, they did it in one day, as a father and son, I didn't know the son was in high school, but they literally installed the entire air conditioning unit. So a lot of our students have jobs that we don't know about, and I think that's another thing we need to do, is kind of delve and then show them those skills that they have can be used to advance even more with, with a couple, with a college education. They have a skill set that they take for granted. So I think we shouldn't lose sight of that, too, that a lot of our students are working in small businesses, and we don't even know it.
People, all these are very valuable information. One of the things that Mrs. Applegate and I, it is still in the initial stage of how can we make this into a big fair, like, you know, like how you were talking about, we were already floating that idea, working along with family engagement to, to really popularize, and you know how there is an extravaganza, so we want to have for CTE, something like that. We are still in the working stages on how we can make that happen. It is, it's very important for all the parents also to know, like, across the board, it's almost like a fair of CTE, which we use, we always, we use that for college fair, but now I think we want to create a CTE fair like that. So we are in the works, we are still initially having those conversations with Ms. Applegate, and I'll get back to you on, the more we popularize this, and we invite industry partners into that, we invite the labor union into that, I think we are going to, the more we have to advertise and popularize. We will, we will take that on.
Thank you. Mr. Adiano?
Just very quick, well, again, you know, amazing work that you're doing, and I'm very proud of the work that you're doing. But I want to piggyback on what Mrs. Alexander said, and I want to let the board know, tomorrow, just coincidentally, I've, I've made a commitment to speak at the city council meeting, because I like to go over there every several months and just talk about the great things that are happening in the district. So to piggyback, Ms. Alexander, on your idea, I was going to share it with the city council and the mayor, and of course, many of the people that attend are business owners, and they are people in the community. I was not only going to share the, the book that the kids put their writing and poetry, but I think I'm going to add also, giving city council and everybody in the community this book as well, and let them know that we have a rich workforce ready to get in there. And I'm going to mention the work that, you know, you guys are doing with the county, and maybe start that conversation about how can we get the same idea going with the city? So I want to know, great idea, I'm going to piggyback, coincidentally, I'll be there tomorrow, let's get it done. What time, Katrin, what time am I supposed to be there tomorrow? Five o'clock, so.
How many copies?
I filled out one of the little cards, and they promised that I could go first, so, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You would need more copies of this?
Thank you so much, and was that, was that all? Not, not to say was that all, but that was more than enough, but I just want to make sure I'm not cutting you.
That concludes our presentation.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right, moving on to 7.2 California School Dashboard Local Indicators Report, and again, I'll turn this over to Ms. Applegate.
Thank you, and I am going to say before Dr. Venkatesan leaves, because she's very humble and very quiet, but she is leading this work ferociously. So I just want to say thank you to you, because you've been a great leader in all of this with your team. Thank you, Board. You have the report enclosed here in that shows that we have met all the criteria for our local indicators on the California School Dashboard. There are five priorities here, total seven, but two of them happen to be testing in ELA and math. So you have the other five priorities in your report that shows that we have met all, all conditions for the dashboard.
Yeah, so we're going to, so 7.3 has been polled, 8.0 Board Discussion, 8.1 Lead Summit, 14 Sponsorship Request. So this is a request, this is an email that had come in, and I had forwarded over to Karen and to apply our board policy. She so graciously, we didn't have a Google form created, so she so graciously created that and sent it out directly to the requester, and they filled it out, and I think you've attached it here, right? So, so yes, Dr. Wyatt?
Thank you, Madam President, and definitely happy to see the form that we had on here, which gives us a little bit more information. And I know I've been critical on some requests in the past, and I want to continue to do that. Now I'm looking at the form, which again, gives us a tremendous amount of information, what we've done in the past, what they're requesting right now, how does it relate to the mission of the district? And again, my, my big question always is, do we have any idea how many students this impacts or will benefit from it? I know in the past, God, I think, is this the one that's like a week long, or is it one day?
This is not a, this is not the...
I think this is a conference. Karen?
In the past, it used to be a week long.
That's what I thought.
Now it's one day.
Oh, it's only one day. Because I know in the past, our kids would go on certain days and participate in different activities and engage with, you know, just folks within the Latin community, so now it's a one-day event. So, you know, my, my big question is, what's the impact it has on our students, you know, what's the outcome that resorts in some sort of opportunities for our students as well? I mean, don't get me wrong, I really like this event, I try to go to it every year, I think it's an amazing event, but I need to be consistent, so.
Ms. Alexander?
Same lines as board member Wyatt, I have the same questions, but I was also wondering, is, I see that we've sponsored in the past, it was 10,000, and the amount that's being asked for is 15,000, so I was just curious to know the breakdown of how the money is allocated, and what, what's the prospectus? Where is it?
I believe there's a flyer attached that we can reference. Mr. Tillman? Or Ms. Alexander, was that? Oh, Mr. Tillman?
I was looking, this has become a lead, when I click on that, nothing pops up. Is there a flyer somewhere?
Right under.
There's something about vendorship. Yeah, so I'm asking, what is this? I mean, we ask the same, this is to be consistent, we ask the same thing to everybody, how many of our students are going to be involved, how many of our students are going to be impacted, and in what way are they impacted? But I don't see that on here.
So are those all the questions? So I can move to Ms. Medina?
Yeah, I don't see it on here.
Ms. Medina?
Hello? Yeah, so I do see that they're saying the educators, so the community educators, administrators, leaders, and so parents and students are, are, you know, part of that, but I do agree that moving forward, how we're trying to, first of all, thank you for this form, this breaks it down, and this is what it is, you know, we want to make sure that we're holding everyone accountable, every organization accountable as well, and making sure that they're, they're fulfilling what our, our mission is, or our vision for the sponsorship program. And, and, and to be consistent, if they did, if we were to approve this, if they did donate in the past 10,000, then that would be something consistent. But as mentioned before, this, it seems like they went from a week-long program to a one-day program, then we can make adjustments if needed, if, if some of the board members feel like we should reduce that amount to something less than that, just being consistent. Again, I always push back sometimes on, on, on the way, you know, how many students, who's receiving the money, how is it really benefiting our students? I think all of these organizations, you know, still have to follow those areas of critique as well, and, and how are they supporting our students? But I do see that they are helping with, this, this would be for educators as well, parents, I know I've been to there as a parent, I've been to those conferences as a parent, but it does mention parents, administration in one of those questions, administrators, educators, and students, so just looking at that.
So just for a little bit more clarity, I guess, so as I've, you know, mentioned before, and I appreciate all of our comments in regards to sponsorship requests, so this particular request came in an email. I don't know if it came to all of us, or if it just came to me. So what I did, because I know that in the past, the practice has been, you know, organizations reach out to board members that they feel either they're more connected with, or maybe they develop, or they have a more developed relationships with, or they just know better or feel more comfortable with, or whatever the case may be. And typically, what has happened is that those particular board members will kind of, you know, bring it forward, and they'll, to some degree, you know, kind of advocate for that organization. This is not what we're doing tonight. So this is just me honoring the email that came in. I asked Karen, hey Karen, I received this email, you know, going with the board policy that we kind of have already established, but we, we haven't really been following, can you, can you send that policy in, in a form of questions to this organization and have them directly submit to us? What is it that they're requesting? What is it that they do? You know, how does their mission align with our mission and so forth? And so we didn't have a Google form. Like I said, Karen so graciously kind of put this together and sent it out to them. So now, if, if, I guess this is where I'm asking the board, I think Karen, this is not going to, supposed to happen until October, correct? So what I would like to request from the board is, let's give Karen the specific questions that we want the organization to, to provide us information with, so that we, we give them the opportunity to, you know, submit the responses to those, to those specific questions that we all have, and then determine, you know, whether it does or doesn't match, you know, or we want to support or not want to support. And, I'm sorry, who was first? So, Ms. Alexander?
President Sabayo, so where did the 15,000 come from? Did the, the email request that amount?
So I think that when Karen sent this Google form, in one of the questions, she, she had asked, what have you been receiving in the past? And then it, the other question says, what would you like to be, you know, supported with? And so I'm just thinking, the organization's saying, hey, well, this is the ideal amount that we would like to, but then again, that's up to our consideration, right?
Okay.
So, so I don't think that they know at all, I think it's just an ideal, you know, request for them. Ms. Medina?
Um, yeah, so some of the questions that maybe, if we, we take this back, is how many attendance have they had in the past when it comes to students, our parents, educators, and staff within, from the school district, if they collect that data? And if they don't collect that data, maybe that's something that they should start doing, so that way we can try to see in the future, because I know that we've supported them in every year, this would be a good idea for us to look at how many of, of our communities here within the district attends. I, I know I've attended as a parent before I was a board member, this is how, this is how long this program has been, and it, and it is inspiring, it, it helps provide opportunities to look at, you know, our culture, looking at even, they'll, they'll say in the, the last part of their, of their board consideration, their information. And right now, with things going on in the environment, this is even more important for our families, maybe this might be an opportunity, what are, what are the subject, what are the topics they're going to be discussing? Because if it helps our families, this could be something we can also ensure that we're, we're public, we're, you know, sharing through the parent portals and all of those, or even for students as well, to kind of learn if they're discussing certain topics that will benefit our, our families to learn from, you know? So that is something that I'd like to learn, you know, what are the topics, what are the discussions that they're going to be having, and, you know, how many, how many families or students or educators and all of that have attended in prior year?
Mr. Tillman? Excuse me, could I ask for clarification real quick?
Sure.
We've done this for several years, I only went back to, how far back do you want me to ask them?
Oh, no, no, I'm like, maybe the last three or two years, I mean, doesn't have to, I just want to have an idea.
Okay.
And if they want to share more, maybe they're going to say, you know, pre-pandemic, we actually had this many people, because I know they've had a huge amount of people attend. Yeah, it's been a huge amount, and they also have it, so I don't know if maybe past the, the pandemic, you know, things might have shifted and changed, but now they've narrowed it to one day, so then, just looking at that.
Mr. Tillman?
Even with the clarification, clarification we got with legal counsel, it said that it had to be something where it's in line with what we're doing, and our students are going to benefit directly, right? So the many students are going to be students, and you could be parents also, so it'd be easy to ask them, how many of our students do they expect to participate, or how many parents, and then what is the total cost of the program? And do they give scholarships? And do our kids get those scholarships? That's another big thing. No, I know it's free to attend, but there's a cost associated with putting the event Right, so they have a cost associated to, to put the event on, and what, what do they think that cost is per parent or per stu, per student? And that way, we would know that we're going to have, and they'll know, we usually have 10 students or 100 students, 100 parents from San Bernardino Unified School District, that's what it comes down to. When I ask folks, folks that approach me, I tell them, we're not going to give you 15,000 on a sponsorship for one person. We get 200, $200, I mean, about 18 to 20,000 per student, and that's for education. So we can't spend a substantial amount for one person for an event like this, so it would have to be serving more than one person.
Dr. Wyatt?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to my colleagues, our colleagues here, for all the points we're bringing up, and I agree with Mr. Tillman, I remember our legal counsel and what they recommended. That's why I keep deferring back to students and families, and, you know, I'm going to go back to the flyer, and, and I know most of you probably have looked at it, and, you know, we've sponsored 10,000 and above, that's where we've been. And if you look at the items, okay, promo video on live broadcast, website acknowledgement, top-tier logo placement, slideshow recognition, shout-outs, VIP welcome dinner, VIP check-in, concierge hospitality services, and, and I just got to get down to it, I don't see anything on here that refers to family or kids. Okay? And right now, it is extremely politically charged out there, and I'm just going to reference to that, because if this is more political than it is impactful on our kids and families, then, you know, I need to say, why are we giving $10,000? And trust me, I know Dr. Mario, go way back with him, I've been to this event, like I said before, hundreds of kids used to go to, we used to bus them in on different days, and it was pretty cool, because the kids would actually go to the event and learn things about their culture. I just don't see that anymore, so I don't know why the dramatic change away from that. So again, that, those are concerns I have, I don't see a $10,000 sponsorship if we're not getting any type of information on impact on students and families in our community. That's just me.
Ms. Medina?
And that's why it's important to know what the topics are. And, and the thing is that, right now, yes, we're, we're in a different, we're in a scary, I would say, scary, fearful, many families out there, it's like, I even feel guilty, someone messaged me and says, Abigail, how can we celebrate Father's Day when knowing that, you know, this is what's happening to our families, you know? And so, you know, we have to understand that many organizations, what, that's why I'm curious to see, what topics are they going to have? Are they going to have informational topics that can help families? At least understand what their rights are, yeah, that has nothing to do with political preferences, because at the end of the day, many fam, many Latino families voted a certain way that was against, you know, what, I mean, with what's going on right now. And so, so I don't see it as a political thing, I see it more as what are the resources and support that's being spread for our students and families within our school district of, of them knowing their rights? I don't know if that might be a subject point, if it is, I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of it, because we want to make sure families understand what's, how to help them, how to help each other, and how to help, you know, because we, we've been through different, we've been through different eras of marginal, marginalization, and this is one of them, and if it was another subgroup, I would also defend and I would also support, how do we understand our rights? How do you understand your rights? And so this is no different for me, and so that's why I believe the topic points would be important to know, what they will present.
Ms. Grande?
I just don't feel comfortable at not seeing, say, a number, like, this will pay for... like, uh, this will pay for, um, 10 groups of, of students from this high school. Or, I don't really see where they have a direct invitation to it. I mean, it's really broad. And I'm sure closer to the event, maybe, I'm hoping they'll get tickets. But, right now, the way it reads, it just sounds like a really beautiful cultural event. And it's not, I don't really see the, where we're going to, you know, help, be helping the students. I mean, it is good for them to be in, at events and be out in the public and all that, and that I, I like. So, if I were to see some kind of idea of what their programming is, do they have certain number of tables set aside for our school district? Parents and students and families, that, that would be wonderful to have seen it. So maybe it's our fault too, that we haven't been more specific on what would, we would like to see. So as I'm just saying, maybe we could send it back with a little fix-it note that says, we need to see some actual, you know, table assignments that you have for every school. Every school has a table or two, you know, something where we can understand that. Because our students do need to be out networking and all of that. That's valuable. Thank you.
Ms. Dr. Wyatt?
And thank you, Madam President and Vice President. Actually, my, my question was going to be exactly what's, uh, Abilis Grande asks. You know, I don't see any tables on here, like, or tickets available. Again, um, because there should be, I would hope, like heck, there are. And the information is limited, so we do need to ask, because I would expect us to be sending family members or community members, our family members with students in our schools to this event, let alone, you know, our, our staff and, uh, board members. Thank you.
Mrs. Alexander?
So, I know a number of us attended last year, and I don't believe we had any type of reference point in terms of how many people could attend. So we, maybe we can circle back and specify what we would like to see. Because there's always a cost of doing business. So, why don't we define what that looks like? And then secondly, um, I also see that if you are sponsored, then you can have a, a table. So we can decide who would be there. Is it our multilingual programs? I know last year they had our RLTC. Our cadets participated. So, perhaps this is an opportunity for us to determine if, if we're interested and what would that look like in terms of our sponsorship. We did that, um, for the actual symphony event in July, when we said we were going to sponsor, and we said how many tickets that we would, um, have, and we would distribute. So, it, this is really our opportunity space to decide what our prospectus looks like, seeing how it's kind of an open book.
Thank you for that discussion. And really, really, that is what was my intention, right? I don't know personally this organization. I don't even think I was there last time when they had this event. Or any, actually, I don't think I've been to any of their events in the four years that I've been a board member, which is actually kind of sad. I should at least have attended one. So, so again, this goes to, the, the, the primary reason of me bringing it before the board and bringing it in this fashion is because I want to, I know that I've expressed frustration in the past of our way of doing it. And, you know, there's questions that I wrote that you, you all have brought up, you know, how many have been in attendance? What topics will be discussed? Do they, you know, give scholarships? These are all great questions, but in doing so, we will be developing the form for, that we will be using across the board for every other, you know, um, organization that comes before us making these kinds of requests. So, I mean, these specific questions may or may not apply to those other organizations that come and submit requests. So this is really my intent to engage the board in this conversation to where we actually, you know, laid the, the ground or the foundation of how we're going to move forward with these, um, with these type of requests, so that we take away, uh, a little bit more of the, you know, subjectivity, or, um, where we can be a little bit more objective. So, I'm not sure. I think we can, we can go about it in a couple of ways. I think maybe we can bring it back to the subcommittee policy. Maybe we can, um, review the actual policy along with the legal opinion that was provided. And we draft some questions where we create a Google form document. And hopefully, we can do all of that before their actual event, so that we give them an opportunity to resend the form and, you know, have them completed and bring it back in time to, before their, you know, before their event. Ms. Medina?
I know I requested this as well, to try to, to look at this. And I do appreciate that, um, Ms. Cunningham already started with creating the form. And, and then now that we're looking at, you know, improving it, and then some might, might relate to other, um, organizations may, some may not. But this is definitely a great start, and I think we're going to build upon this. It's going to be a really good form. I would agree, I would, um, support the idea of coming together as a policy subcommittee and creating this. And then, of course, at the end of the day, having the board agree on it. But, um, I know I requested something similar, so if we can, as soon, the sooner the better.
Then if, if we can do that, then that's the request. Awesome. Great conversation. All right, moving on to 9.0 action items. 9.1 personnel report.
As presented.
Moved by Mr. Tillman, second by Dr. Wyatt.
A vote please.
Motion passed. 9.2, Mr. Comnic?
Thank you, President Sabios. I inadvertently did not connect the two. 7.3 was polled by the board at the start, but 9.2 is the action item that confirms that. Since 7.3 was polled, we'll also need to, uh, come back on 9.2 at a later date with 7.3.
Okay, so what is the item, what is the action?
Table 9.2.
Table 9.2.
Okay, can I get a motion at table 9.2? Right? Moved by Ms. Abilis, second by Mr. Tillman. Vote please. Ms. Abilis Grande, and Mr. Tillman second. Motion passed. 9.3 adoption of the 25-26 Local Control and Accountability Plan Federal Addendum.
Move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Tillman, second by Ms. Alexander. Vote please. Motion passed. 9.4 adoption of fiscal year 25-26 budget.
A move. Second.
Moved by Mrs. Alexander, second by Ms. Medina. Vote please. Motion passed. 9.5 approval of 25-26 school plans for student achievement.
Move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Tillman, second by Ms. Alexander. Vote please. Motion passed. 9.6 approval of annual compensation increase, board, uh, increase for board members.
A move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Tillman, second by Ms. Medina. Motion passed. 9.7 approval of District Y K-12 reading difficulty risk screener adoption.
Move.
Moved by Mr. Tillman, second by Dr. Wyatt. Vote please. Motion passed. 9.8 approval of the resolution to establish criteria experience for early childhood credential teachers.
Move.
Second.
By Mr. Tillman, second by Ms. Medina. Vote please. Motion carries. 9.9 approval of revised educator effectiveness grant plan.
Move.
Moved by Mrs. Alexander, second by Mr. Tillman. Vote please. Mr. Tillman, Mr. Santos? Motion carries. 10.0 consent items. 10.1 approval of consent list. Do we have any to pull?
Move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Tillman, second by Dr. Wyatt. Motion carries. 11.0 reports and comments by union organizations. 11.1 San Bernardino Teachers Association.
She gave it earlier, so no report.
11.2 California School Employees Association.
No report.
11.3 Communication Workers of America.
No report.
11.4 San Bernardino School Police Officers Association.
And no report.
Thank you. 12.0 board policies and bylaws. 12.1 Board Policy 41. 19.11 sex discrimination, sex-based harassment. And I believe we can do this as a first reading. If the board is okay with that, if I can get a motion? Yeah.
And motion to approve?
We're only going to do the first reading, we don't do a motion, right? If we, no, there's an action that we can.
I don't know.
No idea as motion to approve.
Okay.
To approve as a first reading, so we don't have to bring it back.
Got you, okay.
So approving as a first reading, or adopting? So it was moved by Dr. Wyatt in second.
If you're adopting it, it's not classed as a first reading, you're just adopting it. Otherwise, you're approving a first reading, and we bring it back at the next board meeting for adoption.
He said his emotion, his motion is to adopt.
To adopt.
Okay, so it's adopt, thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. So it was moved by Dr. Wyatt, and then second by Mr. Tillman. Mr. Tillman, Ms. Grande? Motion passes. 12.2 Board Policy 51. 45.7 sex discrimination, sex-based harassment. And, um, we can also do, um, the same, so we can.
To adopt.
Awesome.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Tillman to adopt, and then second by Ms. Medina? Oh, Ms. Alexander, sorry. Mr. Tillman? Motion passes. 13.0 reports and comments. 13.1 board, uh, board member comments. I'll go ahead and start to my left with Mr. Santos.
Thank you, Madam President. I only have a couple of questions. I don't know if I can get this information. How large is our class of 26? And how many of those students are A through G eligible that we know?
Awesome, thank you. Uh, Dr. Wyatt?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of things. You know, I know graduations are over now, but had to, got the opportunity, I should say, to attend about three more after our last board meeting. And just want to say, our, our students were absolutely amazing in their speeches. And, uh, what I really saw in, in just about every class I went to in graduation ceremony, was just the excitement of the kids, and the, you know, in terms of saves, we're back. You know, when we were going to somebody's during, just after COVID, their affect was totally different. And what I noticed in the crowd right now, it's like, gosh, they were so much of a homogeneous, coherent group. Like, they were in it for every kid that went up to the stage, and just their excitement and their celebration of one another was just absolutely amazing. And I said, wow, that was just, it was special, you know? Because we went, all these kids went through some very hard times with COVID. And to see that, you know, I, I think that says a lot about our staff as well and our leadership. You know, them just motivating them and getting them excited about school again, and, you know, being seen, heard, and loved. So just great job there. The one thing I would probably want to discuss, and, you know, I know I brought this up to a few folks, is the number of speakers at graduation, you know, in regards to, not students, but adults, right? And not necessarily. And not necessarily just board members, but guests that are there and others that are there. You know, I think it should be really more student-focused. I know it's something we tried at county schools this year, and I would say it was probably the best graduation ceremony we ever had. We tried to go with very few to zero adults, I mean, the minimal possible, and students leading and running it. And I tell you, it just was a really big hit, and it had a whole totally different feel. So that was just something I wanted to acknowledge. And then I wanted to say thank you to Dr. Doughty Rogers. Had a really good time working with her at the Resource Fair and BBQ for our veterans. I love bringing that up because we had a lot of folks from the community out there supporting. I know Ms. Alexander was out there, Mr. Alexander, Mr. Alexander was out there. And, you know, being a veteran himself and just saying thank you to our vets, you know, former military personnel and current personnel as well. And special shout out to San Bernardino POA for their barbecue rig. I don't know if you guys have ever seen that, but last year I had to grill, cook on a little tiny ugly grill. And I got to go with the, you know, the marquee Creme de la Creme grill, it was so cool, but I'm not gonna lie, I had to take some pictures on there. But just a great job. And then, oh, gosh, wrapping up the year, I guess. And I think it's been another long year, but filled with tremendous successes, tremendous successes. Got to go to a couple of graduation parties as well, and that was just a lot of fun. And you know, my hat's off to our parents in the community who didn't just celebrate their own kids, but celebrated other students that graduated that maybe didn't have a celebration that was like their own children's, but they treat them just like their own. So just that sense of community and belonging and being one. Wow, I would have to say in all my 10 years, this is probably, other than my own children's graduation, probably the funnest time I had in 10 years. And, you know, I want to give a little shout out to my colleague next to me who, he got a little sparkle in his eye after he spoke at Cohoan High School with his own sons graduating. And Ms. Santos, that was, that was fun to watch you as well. Gave a little cheer in my eye too, so, because I remember how that felt, and congratulations to you and your boys.
Thank you. Ms. Abalas Grande?
All right, Dr. Wyatt, I told you that principal asked me specifically to speak. Yes, you were. You tried to dissuade me from talking. There was 79 students and 17 speakers. I'm never gonna hear the end of this. And I saw you scribbling writing of speech out at the last minute too, by the way.
Actually, it was the acceptance of the class, just so you know.
It was so wonderful. It was...
But I did, I did ask her to speak. I'm not gonna say I didn't.
Anyway, I just do want to mention, I did actually attend the San Bernardino Valley College when it had, what, was it almost 4,000? Almost 4,000 students? Was it 3,000? It was the largest one ever, all right? And I couldn't find a parking. I had to park three blocks away to get there. And I got there late, but nevertheless, I climbed on that huge stage and they didn't have a chair for me. But that was okay. They found one. And then I called Dr. Wyatt because he was supposed to have been there too. And he said, what was it? You couldn't get in? Was it you? Who was it? Someone, was it Dr. Marcus? Someone couldn't, oh, it was Dr. Marcus, that's right. He could not, there was no parking. And so sadly, I didn't stay for the whole thing. 4,000 students, I just couldn't stand in line that long. But it was overall a glorious event and Dr. Wyatt was wonderful. I love going out with you to the graduations. I just, it just like, it was like the reason for all our work. I mean, it's very moving. I mean, I wanted to cry every single time. And then my own shout out to my daughter Gabrielle Alexander Abalas, who graduated from JP College, and I am so bursting proud. She's a communications major. And she wants to come work for Mary Rhone. Yeah, yeah, so thank you all and thank you, board. I've just had a blast this last year, living my best life. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tillman?
I want to just commend the sites that I attended, the Royal Valley in Coho for doing a great job on their graduations. And Ms. Grande, I write all of my speeches at the graduation. So, and let me say that to Dr. Wyatt, because I know a lot of times a board member says something and we leave with that. But I think that all board members should be allowed to speak at a graduation if they choose to. And I think the principal should be allowed and if superintendent wants to speak. But you talk about other adults, I think I would have no power to limit just to district board members and upper administration speaking. And then the principal, of course, and then, and then the students. But that would eliminate a lot of people who come and want to speak at graduations. And the reason why I say it's important that board members are able to speak if they want to, because the worst thing you could do is allow another politician come in from another agency and speak and then tell a board member they can't speak at a district graduation. To me personally, that makes no sense whatsoever. That's our role. And let me say, I've been doing this for 30 years, and people are impacted by the words of board members. It motivates people, they appreciate it, and it makes them feel good. I get people to tell me, I saw a young lady at the Coho graduation. She remembered me saying something in a speech from 20-something years ago. So what we say as board members makes a difference. So I just want to make sure we're clear that, I hope we all agree, that if board members want to speak at a graduation they're attending, that they're allowed to speak. Thank you.
And also maybe where we set maybe some best practices or rules where it's either the board, board members and the superintendent if they choose to, not anyone else. That might be something, because at the graduation, as I'm recording, I did agree not to speak only because we had a whole line of students, you know, valedictorians, valedictorians that were going to speak. And I didn't want to, because it was a hot day and it was, we didn't want students to have to wait any longer. But, you know, if it's those moments where board members do want to speak, then yes, I kind of, I do agree with you. But at the same time, maybe setting it to, just like you mentioned, just a board member and the superintendent, and that's it. But I know other elected officials from outside want to come and speak, but just the... Yes, we did. Yeah, we did. Yes, we did. But I, but I know for myself, I chose not to speak because of the heat. And just keeping that, keeping those mind... But we did have several. But San Bernardino High School, honestly, it was amazing. My children graduated there, so I also feel what Mr. Santos might have felt, speaking at the graduation and your own, and your own children's graduation. So it was really nice to see the students were excited. We did have a little mishap there with the, with the speakers. But the band started to play and made things a lot better. And the fact that the way our district is able to move really fast to try to resolve it and create solutions really impressed me. One of my questions for tonight, and then trying to get at least some type, I know it might be a little bit much in creating a of what this might look like, so let me just go ahead and read it. So what would it take, or would we need, not to say that we would pass this, to move forward in having our, our high schools be in high schools of choice? Now, with regards to transportation, I know that would be in, but I'd like to see that. I'd like to actually see what that would look like and what are maybe some opportunities of or creative solutions that can be addressed either through the city. I travel through city buses. I know it's not for everyone, but if, if my children chose to go to another school site and I could not afford driving them back and forth, I know for myself and my family during that time, that would have been a great solution. Of course, it doesn't, it's not for everyone. I know I've done the city buses here in San Bernardino with my stroller, with the, you know, you know, traveling during the daytime. What that looks like in the evening, I don't know. But my son also drives a school bus, a city bus to college. So it's not, I mean, so it's, it just depends. So I would like to look at those ideas, not to say that it's, we would pass it, but I would like to see what that would look like in cost. And I'm sure not every student is going on transfer. This might be maybe a few students a year, or maybe up to 100 students. What would that look like? So that would be my, my question for the district.
Thank you. Ms. Alexander?
Thank you. Even though Dr. Fuentes is not here anymore, I just wanted to tell him, thank you for his service, thank you for his leadership. He will be missed and wish him the best of luck. Don't forget the little people. So just a few updates. This past weekend, I had an opportunity to go to the American Girl Celebration that was put on by the San Bernardino Foundation. It was a free event for anyone who wanted to attend. It was entitled American Girl Tea. It was very nice. Some of the leadership in the district that was there, leading the charge, is Mr. Tidwell and Mr. Acosta. And I thought it was definitely one that next year, if it happens, we should just do our best to try to encourage more families to come out, because it's more than just a tea. It's an opportunity, like, the kids learned how to play, to make taco seasoning from scratch, which was pretty cool, especially for my four-year-old granddaughter and eight-year-old granddaughter. And then we also, they did a little bit of horticulture. So I just thought it was a nice event, ended it with a luncheon, and then opportunity to attend, get an American Girl doll. So it was nice. Another item that I wanted to bring up, all the graduates. I know we put a lot of concentration on our high school graduates, but we have some graduates from our middle school and promotions for our elementary schools. So congratulations to all of the graduates and wish you all the best of luck and look forward to the next school year. And thank you to all the administrators. Your work is not done yet. I know you're all going to be working over the summer, but it was a lot of heavy lift this year, and thank you, Mr. Ariano, for your, your leadership. Because definitely can see a lot of progression this year with all the presentations that we received. That's not easy. And so one thing for sure that was consistent, everybody has presented, that's from all the departments, have talked about systems. And the way they have addressed it is very powerful, so we appreciate you for all that you're doing. So thank you. And I'm going to end with, we all know that Thursday, or we should know because we did a resolution for Juneteenth at our last meeting. So Juneteenth is a federal holiday. It is Thursday. And I just want to, for the public, I'm going to do, I'm working with my thought partner right now, and I'm going to share Juneteenth. That's AI. That was, you want to hear from me? Juneteenth was first celebrated on June 19th, 1866, exactly one year after Union General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas on June 19th, 1865, and announced General Order Number Three, which informed enslaved African-Americans of the freedom two and a half years after the Emancipation Proclamation has been issued. So the first celebration took place in 1866, included prayer services, barbecues, music, and reading of the Emancipation Proclamation, and many other traditions have continued today. Juneteenth was acknowledged as a federal holiday, June 17th, 2021. And for the city of San Bernardino, I'm not sure of too many events that are happening, but in our surrounding areas, we have celebrations for people to come out and celebrate, but I just like to encourage those that do. Just look it up for your celebrations, however it is, and a federal holiday and very important to African-Americans. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Grande?
Did you forget something?
I meant to tell you, I want to share something with you. I did try to keep my speeches two to three minutes, and this was the last thing I said. And I'm totally serious. No, I really was, and I was very proud of them. And I said, I hope that one day I see you out and about. And I say, how are you doing? And you tell me, Mary Ellen, every day I can't wait till my feet hit the ground. And that's how I ended it. And so sometimes I did get choked up, and when I come back to sit down, Scott tell me, are you acting?
All right, my turn. Thank you so much. I don't have much to add tonight, really. The only thing that I do want to say in regards to, we had planned a we had planned a, our governance meeting, I think July 1st. Unfortunately, I'm not going to be here July 1st, so Ms. Grande, you'll, you'll be up leading that meeting that night. So we have, I think we're, we're working on rescheduling it with our, I forget his name, but with our... Yes, yes, Mr. Ruth, Ruth, Ruth or Forth, thank you. In that meeting, I say that to say that in that meeting, you know, if we want to bring up the conversation about speakers, I think that that'd be an appropriate time, speakers at graduations, that'd be an appropriate time to kind of bring that up. And, you know, if we want to develop some sort of process or protocols, I know that, you know, I want to have more conversation about it. I have many, many questions, you know, I think that at graduations, you know, any graduations really that I've attended, I think, have like a guest speaker. So I wouldn't want to, you know, be able to remove the ability of the principals to invite somebody that they want from the outside, that they think it's inspirational, or, you know, whatever. So I think that conversation warrants a little bit more of an actual conversation. And, but I definitely agree with board members, obviously, being able to speak. And then, you know, superintendent or, you know, cabinet members. And maybe we delineate in that conversation the order of kind of priority, right? Or something along that, those lines. But I think that that would be an appropriate time for us to, to bring up and have that conversation. I think that's pretty much it for me tonight, so I'll end it at that and I'll turn it over to Mr. Ariano.
Just, just a few comments tonight. Ms. Alexander, thank you for the kind words. I appreciate it. And I just have to acknowledge that I work alongside a lot of amazing people in this district, so it's definitely team effort. But thank you for your kind words, and it's a reflection of everyone that I work with on a day-to-day basis. I want to thank Dr. Venkatesan and all her team for an amazing CTE presentation today. And I want to commend the board for their vision many, many years ago that included Mike Gallo and, and other folks that were on the board that had this vision of changing what public education can look like to give kids alternatives. And San Bernardino City Unified School District continues to be the leading factor in, in that area, and people look to us. And I just wanted to make some comment that I was telling Mr. Tillman, that serving on the Workforce Development Board, I was at the retreat a couple of months ago, and the CEO of the county was speaking, Luther Snucker, I believe is his last name. And he was sharing with us that every month, there are 200 vacancies in the county, month to month, that they're filling constantly. And he happened to put up a list of the vacancies. And I was surprised to see the type of jobs, because I just assumed everything was just an office job, a clerical job, administrator. They have mechanics, they have attorneys, I mean, they have AC folks, I mean, everything. And it made me think, hey, we got kids that are earning these certifications that could be a workforce for the county. So that's where the discussion started, and I'm going to give the credit to Chelsea Ramirez and Alan Kay, that I know they gave it to me, but it's really them. Was the idea of, how can we create this partnership where they, it would be almost like guaranteed admission to college, guaranteed employment with the county? And so we're in the process of working with that process of having them be directly hired to the county, but taking it one step further, giving them one year service credit when they get put on salary schedule, so they would start at step two as opposed to step one. With the whole idea of, A, we fill the positions, and then B, they're filled with positions of kids from our area, and they stay here. So I love that we had this conversation today, and then I love the idea of expanding to the city. And so I just wanted the board to know that we are working hard to continue our work in terms of the career side of our expectation. So a lot of great stuff happening. I want to congratulate and give kudos to the high school principals as well, and everyone, every member of their staff who were involved in these graduation ceremonies, amazing ceremonies. Everyone that I attended was well organized, it was well done, it was well thought through, it was fun, it was positive, it was exciting, it was parent-friendly. They just did a great job. We were very conscientious this year of making sure that we were honoring with no errors the cultural regalia law to make sure that all kids felt welcomed and valued, and they could be proud of who they are. And I want to give Suda and her team credit. They worked all year with representatives of the tribe here locally to make sure that our assistant principals, principals were well-educated as to what type of regalia to expect, to know that they knew the law inside and out. We had parent meetings so that our parents would feel comfortable in knowing that on graduation day, there would not be any embarrassing moments or any errors. So it was just a great graduation season. So I agree with you, Dr. Wyatt. It was great. So I want to commend everybody for their work. And then the last thing I want to say tonight was just again reiterate that tomorrow, I will be attending the city council meeting to continue my effort on behalf of the board, on behalf of the district, of just sharing all the great things that are happening in the school district. And that we're right here waiting to help support the city, to help continue to grow their efforts and their vision as they've done for us. So you're welcome to come by. I think the time was 5:30, we said, Katrin? I think the time was 5:30 we set, Katrin? Five o'clock? And I think I'm scheduled to be the first speaker, but I'm proud to represent our district proudly at the city council meeting. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Dr. Wyatt?
You know, Superintendent Ariano always triggers great thoughts. And I forgot to give kudos to Terry Komnik and his team. You know, I was at one of my sites last week on Thursday, driving back by Pacific High School. And unfortunately, there were quite a few homeless encampments right along our school, I mean, right up against our fence. And again, no disrespect to our homeless folks. I know they're unsheltered and need a place. But, you know, one day I always said, we take care of what we could take care of. And our kids in our schools, our community have to be first. And Mr. Tillman talked about this before, about just even having the opportunity to clean trash around our schools. And we had gotten in an argument with the city about that in the county. Well, Mr. Komnik, he said, Scott, I'm on that. Our team's on that. I didn't call them until Saturday because I was off Friday. He said it was taken care of that day, that day. And because I tell you, when I drove by, I took pictures, a little video and everything. Because, you know, our kids and our families deserve better. They shouldn't have to walk by that. But I'll tell you what, our staff went into action immediately, took care of that. And you're right, Mr. Ariano, we're ready to work with our city. We want to work with our city and help move this place in the right direction, continue to move it in the right direction. So thank you for saying that. Thank you to Mr. Komnik and his team too.
Thank you. 14.0 summary of board members' requests, review of requests.
Good evening. The first request is from Mr. Tillman. Mr. Tillman inquired as to why students couldn't keep their Chromebooks when they graduate. Mr. Komnik said he will look into this. The second request is from Mr. Santos. Mr. Santos asked about possibly having workshops for students to review and explain the financial aid award letters they receive so that they can make informed decisions about their financing, about financing their college education. The next request is from Mr. Tillman and Ms. Rosales Medina, requesting for consistency on sponsorships to include information on how many students will be involved, how many students will be impacted and how they will be impacted. They also would like to know how their mission aligns with ours. How many are in attendance have they had in the past to include students, parents, and staff? And the cost associated with putting on the event and also the topic of the event. It was also recommended to have the Board Policy Subcommittee review the policy and the Google form. Mr. Santos also, the next request is from Mr. Santos. He inquired as to how, how large is our class of 2026 and how many are A through G eligible? The next request is from Ms. Rosales Medina. She would like to know what it would take to move forward to have our high schools as high schools of choice, to include transportation information and what creative solutions may we come up to make this happen? She requested to look, for us to look into this idea. And the last request is from President Sabayo. She is requesting to have a discussion and protocols for graduation speakers and possibly include this discussion in the board governance. And that is it. Thank you.
Can I actually add one more to, to the request list? In regards to the request that Ms. Medina had made in terms of choice, you know, school of choice, can we also get information regarding how many currently do we have attending schools that are not theirs as a, a school of choice? And to what programs or for what reasons they're requesting to transfer? Just for now, just high school, yeah? For the CT program specifically, yeah?
And with that, moved by Mr. Tillman, second by Dr. Wyatt.